Take your.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, April fourteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Suter, will you conduct a roll call of the board, please?
Yes.
Here.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
As it is National Linemen's Appreciation Week and as we prepare for yet another wind event, it made me think of all our utility workers. Your Lord, we come to you with grateful hearts for those who are dedicated to serving their fellow man, to those who show their love for you by risking their lives to do whatever they can to keep the lines flowing. These maintenance workers are often unrecognized until we must do without the convenience. But as they work until the job is done, please watch over them and protect them with your almighty hand. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Recognitions and presentations. Fair Housing Month Proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April eleventh nineteen sixty-eight, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas Rockbridge County, Virginia, is committed to the mission and the intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse inclusive communities. And whereas more than fifty years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County, Virginia, does hereby declare the month of April twenty twenty-five as Fair Housing Month in Rockbridge County as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Rockbridge County. May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Someone.
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Citizen comments. You are now welcome citizen comments unrelated to the public hearings. When your name is called, please address the public at the podium saying your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone online?
No one with their hand raised.
All right, is there anyone out there that would like to speak? Move on to the approval of the March twenty twenty-five minute draft minutes? Is there a motion to approve those minutes? We're doing this two parts, March twenty.
I'll move.
Is there a second? Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel. Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. And I vote yes. Now on to the March twenty-fourth twenty twenty-five minutes. Are there any comments on the draft minutes? And if not, can I have a motion to adopt? Mr. McDaniel. Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. School appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, before you is a resolution for Fund Fifty with the school division in the amount of six hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars. That includes fifty thousand for the recreation center and high school renovation planning, six hundred nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars in IDA grants, and five thousand sixty-six dollars in Title III grants.
All right. There any questions for Mr. Harrison?
Move approve the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution.
Yes, before you is a resolution for additional appropriations and the payment of bills. The total amount of bills this period is one million two hundred thirty-five thousand twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Additional appropriations include thirty-three thousand two hundred and three dollars for the Tyler Municipal Software Services, eleven thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars for Consolidated Dispatch, and five thousand six hundred seventeen dollars for municipal software consulting services. Also before you is the revenue and expense reports through March thirty-first. General fund revenues total forty-six million sixteen thousand two hundred forty-six dollars. Expenditures total forty-six million five hundred forty-three thousand six hundred fourteen dollars or difference of minus five hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars to date. Seventy-five percent of the fiscal year has passed. Sales tax collected is three million two hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars or seventy-four percent of the estimated budget. Bills tax is at two million three hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars or seventy percent of the estimated budget. Lodging tax is at one million ninety thousand thirty-three dollars or fifty-nine percent of the estimated budget. And emissions tax is at two hundred forty-five thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars for seventy percent of the estimated budget. That's all I have at this time.
Any comments? Any comment? If not, is there a motion to adopt?
Move approve.
Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
All righty, that leaves us with twenty minutes. So I believe that we can go on with a budget update. Mr. Harrison, are you ready for that?
Yes, ma'am.
As I say, you do have two items in front of you.
Yeah, forgive me, have I just skipped a page?
Yeah. It's an outdoor events application.
Oh, sorry.
Mid-Mountain Fest, Natural Bridge Station.
I thought that was. Yep, you're right, you're right. Sorry, excuse me, maybe we won't have time. Hold, hold that.
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration of the outdoor event Mid-Mountain Fest, Natural Bridge Station, Mr. Suter.
Yes, this is the second year of event application for Mid-Mountain Fest. In August twenty twenty-four, the board approved an outdoor event application submitted by Andrea Peterson and Matthew Satara for an event named Mid-Mountain Fest, which is, was approved and subsequently unsuccessfully held at the address of three thirty-eight Arnold's Valley Road on Saturday, October twelfth of last year. They begin submitting an application, this time for two events at the same location in twenty twenty-five. The application states the events would be intersectional arts festivals on May seventeenth and October twenty-fifth. As per the county's ordinance, the sheriff and fire rescue chief have reviewed the parking and fire safety plans. They had some suggestions for improvement, which were incorporated in the final signed plans included in the application. All documents associated with the application are attached for your review, and the board has the authority to impose additional special conditions if so desired. Applicant Andrea Peterson, I believe, is in attendance. Is she? Is she here? I'm not sure if she's here or not. She was, I was thinking she was going to be here. But you have options to approve as presented, approve with conditions, or do not approve. And if you vote to approve, please consider it to be an authorization for me to execute that permit. Okay, we got a hand raised, so that's where we are. Okay.
Hi there, I'm joining remotely. This is Andrea Peterson in the applicant for the outdoor events permit.
Excuse me, I don't know if it's on our side of yours, but it's very difficult to hear.
I just cranked it up a little bit.
All right, let's try again.
Hi, this is Andrea Peterson with Mid-Mountain, the applicant.
Great.
But yeah, thank you so much for your consideration and excited to do this again, hopefully twice more this year. Since we turned in the application, we also got a small community grant from Washington and lead towards our October event. So looking forward to like hosting a bunch of folks. We'll be doing some free programming along with the library and the farmer's market and some other folks as well in the lead up to both of the events. So to make sure we have access for more, as many people as possible.
Gentlemen, any questions that you may have for the applicant? Were there any issues last year?
Nope, ran really smoothly. You know, we undersold old ticket. It's a little bit because it was right after a Hailane. But at this time, we're actually doing slightly fewer acts than last time to make it a little a bit like to let all of the bands explore or induce some more stuff. We're also adding in some participation with the Historical Society and some other local partners that we're excited about for the May seventeenth event, which is history themed.
Okay, thank you. All right, gentlemen. Any other questions? If not.
Move approve.
Mr. McDaniel, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration of outdoor event application for Boxerwood Education, Mr. Suter.
Yes, similar to the one you just approved. In past years, the board has approved outdoor event applications for Boxerwood Education Association located at nine sixty-three Ross Road in Lexington or with the Lexington address, but in the county. Boxerwood Executive Director Emily Cole was, has again submitted an application for their upcoming event season. As noted in their application in your package, four events are planned. Past events at Boxerwood have been successful with no reported issues as per the county's ordinance. And like the last one you approved, the sheriff and chief, fire rescue chief have reviewed the parking and fire and safety plans, both approved and signed. All documents associated with the application are there for your review. As with the last one, the board has the authority to impose additional conditions if desired. And Ms. Cole is in attendance, I believe. And she's got her hand up. And just like the last one, your options include to approve it as presented, approve with conditions, or do not approve. And if you do approve, it would be with my authority to execute the permit. And we ready for Ms. Cole?
Yes, please.
Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Cole.
All right, well, I just wanted to say thank you all for partnering with us every year to make this possible. I'm very grateful to the sheriff and the fire chief who came out in person and walked the grounds with me and reviewed the application. We always want to make sure we're doing what's best to keep everyone safe while they enjoy our garden. And I'm excited for another season with this.
Good, thank you. Gentlemen, any? Any questions?
I move to approve.
Lyons, do I have a second? Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. McDaniel. Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration to schedule public hearing for twenty twenty-six budget and the twenty, what is that? Combined CIP, twenty-six to the thirty combined CIP, Mr. Harrison.
Before, before he starts, I just had a couple of things that I wanted to share. On March thirty-first, the board reviewed the draft budget, which was still over seven hundred thousand dollars out of balance. The Finance Committee at that time requested board members provide them thoughts to consider to close that gap, after which Finance Committee did have another meeting. A summary of the results of that meeting is provided in your board package. The revised draft budget proffered by the Finance Committee is now balanced and includes a proposed three cent increase on the real estate tax to be dedicated to capital. And at this point, I'll ask Mr. Harrison Gold's report and the changes made to reach that determination. And as I noted in the, just a reminder in the March thirty-first meeting, if the board is able to come to a decision this evening without significantly detailed changes, we will be able to stay on track with the current budget schedule. That schedule includes a public hearing at the board's regular meeting on April twenty-eighth and for consideration of the budget and CIP adoption then on May the fifth. So again, while it was certainly and always the board's prerogative, if the adoption is, if the adoption date is pushed out, you would also, just as a reminder, you would need to extend the tax due date out past June fifth by resolution. June fifth is the date in our code of the due date, and you'd have to push that out.
Thank you.
So at the March thirty-first meeting with the budget presented at that time, there was still a budget gap for a little over seven hundred thousand. This Finance Committee has met a couple of times after that and got feedback from board members, other board members. And as a result of those conversations and those Finance Committee meetings, we were able to close the budget gap. Part of that is on the revenue side. The big ones are being sales tax. We went with the full estimate provided by the state. Lodging tax was, instead of being reduced, was proposed to be kept level with the FY twenty-five budget. The utility tax, BPL, and the cigarette tax, those were, instead of looking at a five-year estimate, we just looked back at a last couple of years as far as developing an estimate put in. The, on the tax side, personal property tax is recommended unchanged at four twenty-five. And that applies to also business, personal property. Two fifty-five for machinery and tools, again unchanged. There is a proposal of the current real property tax rate is sixty-one cents. There is a proposed to raise that to sixty-four cents. The additional three cents would generate nine hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars in additional revenue. The Finance Committee does recommend that that revenue be restricted to capital. So if approved, you'll notice in the general fund or transfers, there you'll see a transfers out, a new line item to the Capital Purchases Fund. And within the Capital Purchases Fund itself, you see a revenue coming in from the general fund. Along that same concept is with capital, the Finance Committee has recommended that if there's any surpluses in the general fund at the end of the year, that fifty percent of the surplus be transferred and used for capital. So the total budget, including the three cents additional taxes would be sixty-five million five hundred fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars. And that includes using four million five hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred sixteen for capital projects and restricted reserves for EMS recovery fees. That is a million forty-two thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars higher than FY twenty-five. That includes three million nine hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars for capital projects and also the nine hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred fourteen in restricted revenue generated from the three cents and additional property taxes if approved. On the expense side, some notable changes there were an increase in dispatch of sixty-six thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars. That, that increases because of the five percent fee we pay to the city of Lexington for managing the dispatch as the fiscal agent that I had failed to include in the previous draft. There's a ninety-eight thousand six hundred sixty-six reduction in the solid waste budget. Daniel had provided a revised draft that included savings and costs with the closure of sites as once the South River side is constructed. Also a notable change is proposed elimination of funding for the preschool program in the amount of hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars. The this, on the capital expenditure sides, we do have three million eighty-eight thousand two hundred forty-four dollars for the current CIP projects, thirty-four thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars for laboratory capitals projects. It also includes the five hundred sixty thousand for four school buses and two hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred seventy dollars for central dispatch capital purchases. Still, as of date, there's currently, health insurance remains unchanged.
When you say currently, what does that mean? That means it can change?
We don't expect any increases in our premiums.
Expect and are last. Have an agreement that it will not?
No, our last conversation with.
It will not.
It will not.
Obviously, we're self-insured, so the, the, the actual expenditure will fluctuate through the year, but the, the quote that we got was to keep it level.
And so those are the major points to point out and the changes made from the March thirty-first meeting. The, again, we'd be requesting that the board advertise the public hearing to be set at April twenty-eighth. And then a budget adoption would be on May fifth, as, as the board is aware. You cannot adopt the budget on the same day as the public hearing. You have to wait at least a week.
And it takes about a week after budget adoption for the Commissioner Revenue, combined Commissioner Revenue to create the, the, the budget or the, the tax book. And then also to get that over to the treasurer to then send it to the processor to print bills.
And I, I have a few questions, but gentlemen, I'll take, if you have questions, Mr. Lewis. Your day.
I don't know.
I have a few.
Okay, well, I have some thoughts. I don't know a question.
Well, we're, we're going, we have four or five minutes, and then I don't think we'll be finished. We'll continue after the public hearing, but just have a couple of questions. So on lodging taxes, talk me through how we have talked all year about how there's a contraction in lodging taxes. And now we feel how are we basing the lodging tax? Revenue.
The discussion on that was around keeping it level, even though you are correct. The lodging tax is below estimates for FY twenty-five. But is, we're being hopeful that with FY twenty-six, keeping it level with the estimate for FY twenty-five with the new hotels coming on.
I'll never predict when, when a construction project is finished, but from, from indications that I've heard, the new hotel out here behind Pizza Hut will be, would be opening August-ish, which is early in the fiscal year.
Or already receiving from the other, correct, the other, the other hotel. So we would have been already generating lodging taxes there, and we're still not meeting our expected. So.
That is correct.
Talk me through the cigarette tax. Last I looked, the cigarette tax were not bringing in as much.
Yes, we decided to look back. We were in the first few drafts, and this is true with the utility tax and the BPL licenses. We were, in my, the initial presentation of the budget, included a five-year average. Of course, those five-year average includes the COVID years. So discussion with the Finance Committee, we thought it'd be more prudent and more accurate if we just estimate the last couple of years to get the estimate on those. So which are, which is higher than what we budgeted for FY twenty-five. We're already bringing in more money.
We are.
Than what we estimated for those, those taxes.
Okay.
And yes, on the cigarette tax, we, we are, the Commissioner Revenue is aware of maybe having to crack down again on potential people not paying.
So the recommendation is the three percent would be dedicated to capital.
Three cents.
I mean, sorry, three cents would be dedicated to capital.
Yes, ma'am.
And anything over would be?
Yes, any surplus generated in the general fund, the Finance Committee is recommending that fifty percent is moved to the capital fund.
So if we actually have a deficit this year, that money then could not come from the three percent, it would have to come from where?
The remaining general fund reserves.
Our reserves.
The proposal is, would be to create a capital fund, and actually the capital fund becomes more truly a, a fund. We call it a fund right now, but it's more of an accounting. But if it had its own source of, at least part of it, it still need to be funded mainly by the general fund. But then it starts becoming a more self-sufficient fund for our planning purposes. Capital planning purposes.
It is.
It is six o'clock now. We will talk more about this later. We'll move on to the public hearings. Mr. Sladen. I'm trying to.
Just hit on share. I was wondering.
We unsure.
All right, we have a total of four public hearings for y'all this evening. Go by them. I'll start by sharing my screen myself. The first public hearing we have is associated with Nicholas and Bethany Ioka mailing address of 1372 Rafeen Road, excuse me, Rafeen, Virginia, 24472 have made an application to amend a condition associated with breeds permitted associated with a previously approved special exception permit for a commercial kennel. The property identified in orange here is located at 1492 Rafeen Road, Rafeen, Virginia, is owned by Nicholas and Bethany Bethany Ioka. Is located on south side of Rafeen Road, approximately 0.39 miles west of the intersection of Rafeen Road and Ridge Road. Property is located in the general use agricultural zoning district A2 per section 603.03-5 of the regulations. A kennel is used by special exception in the A2 zoning district. Property is further identified as tax map number 27-a-23B and consists of 1.88 acres per, excuse me, 1.88 acres per tax records. Property is located in the Magisterial, Walker's Creek Magisterial District. On May 23rd, 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved the special exception permit as recommended by the Planning Commission on May 11th of the same year with five conditions, excuse me, a total of four condition. They pertain to the development of the property in substantial accordance, what types of breeds were allowed to be bred on the property, the total number of dogs associated with the breeding activity, and the other condition saying that all activities will be within the existing dwelling and/or areas building shown on the reference development plan. The pending applications amend the second condition associated with the types of breeds specified with the previously approved special exception permit. The request is to remove the dog breeds, Blue Heeler, Australian cattle, and Great Pyrenees, excuse me, and replace the those breeds, those three breeds with two, and they would be Burmese Mountain Dogs and Welsh Corgi. On March 12th, 2025, the Planning Commission held its public hearing. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the special exception to modify condition number two associated with the previously approved special exception permit to the following condition. Breeding limited to two of the following breeds of dogs, A, gold retrievers, B, Labrador Retrievers, C, Bernese Mountain Dogs, D, Welsh Corgis, and E, the final breed is small and standard poodles. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Nicholas Ioka to review the details of the project, answering questions the board they have.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. Thank you for considering our request. As you have heard and probably read fairly straightforward. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer this. The reason for this is that this, when we got our original exception, my brother from Kentucky was interested in coming over and living on the property. He has sheep and he is and still is into raising dogs that are for herding animals. My family is not interested in raising those dogs. That would be for herding or animal protection livestock. And so we are requesting to remove the three that would be that way. That would be more towards that and then add breeds that we would be more inclined to be interested in at some point, so.
So your plans changed.
That's right. My brother did not move.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, any, any questions for? So you're, you're not planning on breeding those dogs currently, just maybe sometime in the future, is that what I'm understanding?
Having the opportunity to breed them would give us opportunity to to look into that, but we know that the other three we do not want to breed. So it's something that we'd wanted to switch out. That's kind of the reason why is something that we, so that at least it's on the list that we can.
Do we have any other questions? If not, we'll let you have a seat. Thank you very much. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
There is no one signed up to speak. We can recognize anyone in the audience that'd like to speak with that. Let me check online. If you'd like to make a comment pertaining to the dog kennel on Rafeen Road, please utilize raise your button hand now online.
Or in the audience, if there's anybody out there who would like to speak.
Not seeing online.
We sure no one has anything to say out there? All righty, then I will close the public hearing.
Question, comment?
Just refresh my memory. Is this the third?
This is, I believe this is the the second permit associated with this property. They do have an existing kennel license associated with the, yes, sir.
It has been three times that we've worked with the Ioka, it's just
I believe it might be a total of four, but at least three. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
Are there any other questions or comments? Before we move on? Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, we'll move on to USS Hilltop Solar.
There with me here. All right, I'll go ahead and get started. USS Hilltop Solar LLC has made an application. Sorry. All right, sharing the GIS now, excuse me, GUS, S Hilltop Solar LLC, 1323 Washington Avenue, Minnesota, Minneapolis, Minnesota, has made an application to amend a condition with a previously approved special exception permit for a 3.00 megawatt AC power solar project. Property is identified as 331 Lloyd Tully Road Natural Bridge Station, Virginia, 24579 is located on the west side of the intersection of Lloyd Tully Road and Gilmore's Mill Road. The property is owned by William S. Shepherd and Jennifer K. Ratigan. 30 Apalusa Lane Natural Bridge Station is their mailing address. Natural Bridge Station 24579, further identified as tax map number 115, excuse me, 113-5-D. That is highlighted in orange here. Let me zoom out for a second. The the full area is outlined in orange. The portion of the property is located in the agricultural and general use districts. That's the A2 zoning district, and that's the portion, in fact, I'll turn the aerial photo off real quick, that's the portion in white. The and then a second portion of the property is located in the agricultural transitional zoning district. That is the light pink on the map there towards the north. Per section 603.03-9 of the regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the A2 zoning district. Per section 603.0B, 0.03-14 of the regulations, public utilities are used by special in the AT zoning district. Again, the pink on the map is the AT, and the white on the map is the agricultural and general use A2. The proposed three point, three megawatt solar facility is located on approximately 21 acres of the property identified as tax map number 113-5-D. Property is located in the Natural Bridge Magisterial District. On the original special exception permit with associated conditions was approved on January 8th, 2024 by the Board of Supervisors. The pending application is to amend condition number nine, requesting an extension to the implementation and completion dates. Number nine currently states implementation of the project by May 1st, 2025 and project completion by December 31st, 2025. Per the enclosed application, a letter from Dan Sappler representing the project this evening. He is a senior project developer with USS Hilltop Solar LLC. The request is for an 18th month extension for implementation and completion date. A little bit of background of the implementation here. Per the customary dictionary, meaning implementation is defined as the process of putting a decision or plan into effect. Since the approval of the special exception permit, the applicant applicant has worked with various agencies. Additionally, the applicant has submitted erosion and sediment control and storm more management plans to the current to the county. As my understanding, they're currently working on finalizing those plans. As the zoning administrator for the county, I would not be comfortable making the determination that the implementation of the project has not commenced. So we're really talking about the completion dates associated with the application. On March 12th, 2025, the Planning Commission held its public hearing. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the application to modify condition number nine and associated with the previously approved special exception with the following amended condition. Revised number nine would state, construction of the project shall commence before May 1st, 2026 and project completion by June 30th, 2027. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Dan Sappler, again, senior project developer with USS Hilltop Solar LLC.
Pull up your slide.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me back. I greatly appreciate your time and and consideration on the matter. I prepared a slide, so we'll just let Chris pull that up. But since Chris mentioned, we've been actively working through kind of the later stage development of this project since back in January of 2024. First, I want to state that I was definitely over my skis in thinking that we could get this thing built in two years. You know, things just have not moved as as quickly or as rapidly as I had hoped back in early 2024. So backing up, we obviously got our special exception permit in January of 24. We kicked off the BDOT permit right off the bat. We anticipated that taking about two to three months. It took eight, and we received it in August of 2024, which is great, but it did take a little bit longer. We did, as Chris mentioned, commenced the storm water management review process with the county as well. Then in January, I was issued a non-refundable nutrient credit payment. Then I kind of took a look at the the condition, the construction condition number nine. That didn't align with our current construction schedule, so essentially put that on halt and then resubmitted this request to the county. The other portion that we're working towards is a new power purchase agreement with Dominion Energy. So back in 2022, we entered into an agreement with Dominion. We were awarded through their RFP process again in 2022. Since then, as you know, everyone's well aware, economic conditions have skyrocketed, interest rates have increased drastically. So that PPA, again, three years ago, no longer was economically viable. So we terminated the PPA and rebid in February. So our intention and Dominion's intentions, they're equally as excited about this project. You know, as everyone's well aware, the Virginia Clean Economy Act, they need to be 100% renewable by 2050. So this will hopefully help them achieve their goal. We anticipate signing the PPA in August of 2025. That milestone is really the stopgap for us to be able to procure equipment. And I appreciate you bearing with me right now. This is kind of a convoluted timeline. But so in August of this year, we should be able to have a revenue stream for the project. That allows us to finance these construction materials and commence procurement, I stated one month later here. So I've put up here a few items and where, how long they're currently taking to procure. So we have modules, those are the solar panels, roughly six months, steel racking, seven months. The longest lead item is transformers are taking about a year for us to procure. But we're, what we've been doing with a lot of other other projects is commencing construction prior to the transformers getting to site and then looping them in later in the construction cycle. So that gives, that brings us to May of 2026, where we can commence construction. I've listed a few items that we're going to take care of during construction. That's about a six to seven month process, bringing us to roughly February of 2027 to when we should have the system up and running after utility testing, they get the whole thing hooked up to the grid. And yeah, we should hopefully have it up and running in February 2027. Then I added an extra four months just in case anything goes awry and takes longer than anticipated until then. So that is the case. That's the the nature of the beast at this point, so I really appreciate your consideration on the matter, and thank you very much.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
So it's all about a funding stream that you're anticipating with Dominion. And what happens if the what Dominion offers is not enough?
There you, yeah, so there's actually another program through Dominion called the Shared Clean. There's another state program. I can't recall the name of it, but we could bid into that one as well.
Right.
This is just the quickest route through the PPA.
Doesn't come through or?
We could bid into the the next, the next program. We're waitlisting that one, and Dominion has illustrated to us that they accept our purchase price under the new RFP. It's just going to now up to kind of negotiating the contract language that the legalese are taking care of. So we did get the the thumbs up from the price perspective, which is a good sign.
Is there anything else for him? I'll let him sit down and we'll
Is the landowner here this evening, or are that, do they anticipate saying anything, Chris?
Oh, I had forwarded an email from them. I I do not see them here, and I can check online, but I am uncertain if they were planning to attend. I did send y'all an email that they had previously sent to the planning commission.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
Two people signed up, Trip Olney, followed by Bill Russell. Absolutely. We'll recognize you. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
No, no worries. We'll get, everyone will have time to speak. Good evening.
For Valley, Carr Creek, and also a board member of Rockbridge Taxpayers Alliance. I'm going to read from this because I'm actually going to be quoting from Mr. Buchanan, who's here this evening. Just want to provide you with what I think is some useful evidence to help inform your decision regarding this this extension. This information comes directly from Mr. Bill Buchanan, the CEO of Bark. I think we can all agree that he is pretty well-versed in all things solar and that his his opinion should be well-informed. During the planning commission meeting of just last week regarding a special use exemption for the Highland Bell site, Commissioner Whitmore first stated to Mr. Buchanan.
Are you speaking on BRC's public hearing, or are you speaking on Hilltop Solar?
Hilltop Solar. Okay, this is, this will be, it'll should become clear regarding Hilltop Solar.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No problem. So during that planning commission last week, which was in regard to the Bark special exception So during that planning commission last week, which was in regard to the Bark special exception request, Commissioner Whitmore first stated to Mr. Buchanan, you have the right, this is quote, you have the right to expand the solar field. If you didn't get approval to put the permanent lay down yard warehouses in, what would you use that land for? End quote. Mr. Buchanan responded, and I quote, I don't think we would have any plans to expand the solar field. Community solar was a concept when it was done. He went further saying, quote, I'm not sure that it has initial, it has the initial benefit in the long term, followed by, quote, I don't think we have a huge demand that we would say we should make it the solar plant bigger. Quote, it would probably sit there. You can confirm these statements by watching the YouTube recording of last week's planning commission meeting from the four oh two, four hours, two minutes long meeting, thirty three second mark to the four hour, three minute and thirty seven mark. In effect, what must Mr. Buchanan is more broadly implying is that the industrial or commercial solar plants are not about generating electricity to meet demand. What makes them economically viable is the selling of the tax credits. Mr. Buchanan alluded to this fact earlier in the meeting when he said, quote, if a developer out of New York or Canada is coming in and making an investment of building a solar field, a commercial solar field on a farm in somebody's field or whatever, those things trade hands four or five times through their life cycle. And then now somebody's left with that thing when it's ready to be retired, end quote. Given that the Trump administration is scrutinizing all of the Green New Deal programs, one has to wonder if the real reason driving these industrial solar plants, money through selling credits, is drying up and decreasing demand. Is the extension US Solar requests due to the delays mentioned in their request letter? Or could it be that they don't see a way to unload their project once they get it built? Perhaps it would be prudent to trust, but verify.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Russell.
Bill Russell, Cars Creek, good evening. Looking at the application during the planning commission meeting, I was, I'm a little confused what's going on here. I don't think V dot has been approved. I think it's that's a changed V dot application process, if I'm not correct. So that hasn't hasn't happened. PPA has not been signed. Stormwater management plan is not finalized. Don't know about the site plan. What I do know is US Solar, which is the parent company of this, operates approximately one hundred community solar operations, about twenty of them would have been in put in place and operation over the last year and a half. They were able to get the equipment within those timelines in terms of the modules and other things for their projects that they are. Almost all of their projects are in the upper Midwest Midwest. Quite a ways to come from, and I I just don't understand why they've had to lag when the rest of the company has moved forward. I would, I would personally recommend a short leash on a extension of this for several reasons. Today's news was that the general media misreported some of the executive orders on tariffs. And in fact, they applied to solar modules which have been tariffed. That means they're coming in most of from China at about two hundred and forty percent with a hundred and forty five percent tariff, two hundred and forty percent of cost. I don't know that anybody's going to find real opportunity to start a project if they haven't made those acquisitions yet. Addition to which, we see that Congress and the budget people are now putting up for repeal the renewable energy tax credits for solar and wind. New bills came in last week and the Budget Committee has more. I don't know that this is a viable program, project rather, at this point in time. And I think you ought to think about getting a more complete business plan and then extending for a short period of time based on what's happening. Maybe it'll maybe the market will change in a year, but if it doesn't, you're going to be stuck stuck with a project that's still not being built. Thank you.
That's all that signed up, but I know we have leased one gentleman.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion of the signup. I hope I'm not the only one who listened to a bunch of red flags going up about these delays, about they don't even have an agreement to sell the electricity yet. I mean, come on. If they're this disorganized, making their plan, what else is going to fall by the wayside? Screenings. You may remember me from last time. I live right across from the river. I'm not excited for this. I put my land in a conservation easement to protect the environment around that area. We're right there by Wilderness Area, the National Forest, all those things. There's campgrounds, four campgrounds close by. This is really a bad spot for this in the best of conditions. And from what we've just heard tonight, they don't have their stuff together just on the construction, never mind running it, completing it, and even selling the electricity. What's going to happen if they don't get that and they're halfway through? There can be two years building this thing, drilling holes and moving dirt. So I hope you'll at least push this down the road. I know we have the planning commission has some some guidelines coming up for solar farms, which we didn't have when this was here. At least push it until we can implement some of those things and maybe have some better ideas of how this thing will really run and be completed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This, Mr. Jeffor, I know who you are, but if you don't mind stating your name and district for the record.
Jeffor, I live right across the river in two hundred Blackbridge Lane, Napier Bridge Station.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bill Buchanan with BRC, and I just figured since I was quoted, I need to clarify some things. First of all, what we have at at the at the Pile and Bell location or or Cars Creek that Bark owns is a community solar. And so just for the sake of of all of you understanding, there is a huge difference between a community solar project and a commercial scale solar project like what US Solar is proposing. There, the difference being that our our solar field is our members, because we're a co-op, our members buy blocks. They there, it's a, it's a, it's it's kind of a, they they purchase blocks based on, maybe they can't afford to put their own solar in. If they if they would like to have solar at their home, it's the easiest way to think of it is a residential solar project that is smashed together into one one solar field. And so different members within our system, either they can't economically, can't afford to put their own solar in. Maybe their maybe their land where they live or their home doesn't have the right, you know, the right direction to really get a benefit out of solar. So what community solar does is allows them to buy buy benefits of solar production on on their rates. So it's it's a it's a rate hedge basically for their for the 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 consumer, the consumer member, only the members can buy it. So so it's a lot different than, that's a lot different than a commercial scale solar where where in today's world where we have such a such a, you know, we're we're coming into a time of a shortage of generation and transmission and and it's really takes on a lot different look than what our community solar does. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, anybody online?
No one with their hand raised.
I will close public hearing. Comments?
Yeah, absolutely. And if I may, we we historically have the applicant been able to respond to some of the comments made. They, if Don Sappler would like to do that, what the notes I've written out is a B status of B dot approval, E and S. And then you can touch on tariffs if you'd like.
So we do have B dot approval. I would also like to make the argument that we do have our stuff together as a company. As one of the commenters said, we have built one hundred of these to date and plan on doing so in the future. With regards to the PPA, we're not going to be able to build this without the PPA. There's going to be no construction financing unless we have the PPA. So you will, no one in this room needs to worry about, you know, the project being built without a revenue stream. We can't get construction financing unless there's a revenue stream. So that's that's kind of why I'm up here asking for the extension is because the PPA comes in August, which allows us to procure equipment and then instruct. And that PPA will be in place, so we will have a revenue stream in place, and we should be ready to go. I believe that was it. I can answer your question.
Once again, you're saying you had a plan and B dot didn't get their stuff done in time, so your plan had to change. They didn't get their.
Yeah, amongst other things, yeah. If hindsight's twenty twenty, I should have likely asked for a three year condition on the condition number nine.
But I mean, you can't control B dot. You do, you can't tell them.
Right.
I need this tomorrow. We you can work with them like we can ask them, but but that's generated a significant delay.
Are there any other?
So so when when do you expect to have your financing also? What's the date you're expecting that approval again?
This August, this so four months.
Four months.
We're off to the races.
All right. So can we put a stipulation in that contingent on securing financing by the end of August?
I think that'd be problematic. I might lean on Mr. Dryden that the conditions have to be sound and reasonable and associated with the use of the property.
Well, it's sound, but if you can't pay for it.
I would, I would probably not be too concerned about though, Chris, because it is actually tied into the payable finance to actually do what the use of the property is for. So unless unless you have another strong objection to that.
My other concern is the application is unique to amending condition number nine, so it would have to be included in number nine.
But the board's not not, but the board supervisors can impose what conditions they would like to impose.
Limited to the advertising standards, and the advertising standards are limited to modifying that particular condition.
It'll take care of itself.
Yeah, it will.
And that's fine if we could just make it specific to the PPA. Power purchase group. There's a difference between financing and then power purchase group, just specifics.
Regardless, if you don't get it, you can't build it.
Exactly.
It'll take care of itself.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
If I may, as as reported, a later email from myself made an error on the posted board docs. And so I'd like to have available of of the draft ordinance available to the public for the public. But we incorrectly put the former language associated with the revised language. So this time I'd like to pass out hard copies for the board.
I appreciate that.
And then, of course, there's hard copies for the public at the.
Why, why don't we? Why don't we just state what that is so that people don't have to get a copy and read it?
So originally, the on, again, the planning commission has recommended approval for number nine to state construction of the project shall commence on May first, two thousand and twenty six, and project completion by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. And so in the original ordinance that was posted on board docs, everything was correct in the agenda item or excuse board report as we refer to. But we had incorrectly put the old condition number nine in the language, which stated implementation of the project by May first, two thousand and twenty five, and project completion by December thirty first, thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. So as far as as far as where it is physically on on the paper I just handed out, it should be the last sentence on page two. On page three, excuse me.
Is there a page three?
Labeled as page three.
Is there?
Page you're there.
Gotcha. Label this page three.
Page, no, sir, page two, not print, but I could certainly pull it up if you like.
Is there anything on there that's different?
No, sir, that's the only change of the ordinance. Only correction, I should say.
It's the day.
Is is the is the language associated with the modification of number nine?
Mr. Slade, I have a question for you. Obviously, if this is approved, it extends the timeframe, which I too have some questions about whether it actually be built or not. But what happens if we do not approve this change? What happens to the original approval to that allowed them to build it?
They would be essentially required to complete the project between now and December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. Which Mr. Sappler may have some additional comments on what that that would do to the actual project.
As far as extending deadlines, I feel like Mr. Mr. Dryden, we have done that in the past, haven't we? Haven't we?
You 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 have, we have the authority to be able to extend deadlines.
And we've done that in other cases.
For not on solar project, but on other projects when Dominion or Bark has come or other groups have come, we've extended lines. It's actually, it's not unusual to happen.
Most recently, if I recall correctly, it was the Dominion projects associated with the lay down yard.
Mr. McDaniel, did you have other questions that you wanted to? Anybody else?
So if I may, just for the record, so this is the revised ordinance. Page one is here, page two is here, they remain verbatim the same. And then the update or the correction, I should say, comes into play with this quote that is highlighted on the screen. It incorrectly said stated that the former condition number nine. And again, that's on on what's labeled.
Might just want to highlight it.
It wasn't on my screen.
Just click it.
That one there. Everything else as posted on board docs is is the same. But again, it was correct in the board document itself, the the board report, I should say.
Right. So any other questions? Comments? Do you need more time to reflect? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move to grant the extension.
So Lyons, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
No.
Mr. Day.
No.
And I vote yes. We'll move on to Bark Electric.
Excuse me, ma'am, I have a statement I need to read before we start on that.
Absolutely.
Things from all matters discussions are voting related to the application to amend a condition associated with a previously approved special exception permit for public utility. Office complex, equipment yard, and solar facility in the A two zoning district. And my disclosure statement required under Virginia Code two dot. And my disclosure statement required under Virginia code 2.23115F is on file with the board supervisor. All right, go bottom. I'll share my screen real quick. Uh, B A R C Electrical Cooperative, PO Box, uh, 246 Millboro, Virginia 24460, has made an application to amend conditions associated with a previously approved special exception permit for a public utility in the agricultural and general use districts, the A2 zoning district. The property is identified as 1972 Big Spring Drive, Lexington, Virginia 24450, as further identified as tax map number 47-a-50, consisting of 15.24 acres. That is highlighted in orange on the screen. Uh, property is located on the northeast side of the intersection of West Midland Trail, which is identified as Route 60 and Fredericksburg Road. That portion of Fredericksburg Road is also identified as Route 60. The bark is, oh, uh, the property is owned by B A R C Electrical Cooperative with the same mailing address above. Uh, per section 302.164 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, public utilities are defined as building structures and facilities such as office complexes, equipment yards, power plants, substation, major transmission lines, data centers, water and wastewater transmission lines, water and wastewater treatment plants, pumping stations, tanks, wells and/or similar operations publicly or privately owned, furnishing electricity, gas, uh, rail, transport, communications, water and sewer, or related services to the general public. Per section 603.03-9 of the Land Development Regulations, public utilities are used by special exception in the A2 zoning district. Uh, so I'd like to somewhat briefly review the, the, uh, history of the project, uh, of the facility and, and um, and the planning process to date. On May 26, 2015, the board of supervisors approved a special exception permit uh, for a public utility in the A2 zoning district for an eight acre parcel. Uh, that, and that was the original Highland Bell parcel, of course. Uh, the special exception permit was for an office complex, which of course is Bark's offices, equipment yard to the rear of the Bark offices and a solar facility. That is the existing solar facility in front of the Bark office. Uh, the existing solar facility is approximately 1.6, 1.8 acres. Uh, on November 2nd, 2015, B A R C purchased additional 7.24 acre to the west of the existing eight acre parcel. A boundary line adjustment plat vacated that property, uh, common property line to create the existing 15.24 acre parcel as you see on your screen. Uh, on March 28th, 2016, the board of supervisors approved amended amendment to the May 26, 2015 special exception permit. The amended plan was to provide for a solar, uh, expansion of a solar facility to accomplish a portion at that time, the newly acquired 7.24 acres. Additionally, the 2016 plan included a community field, uh, with the, with the expansion of the county collection center that, uh, and, and other, other, uh, issues associated, excuse me, uh, other associated with drought, drainage patterns, limited parking with that particular area. Uh, the plan for a community, uh, field did not materialize. Uh, on 2017, July 4th, 2017, the board of supervisors approved a two-year special exception permit to, uh, utilize the portion of the area on the west side of the property, which was previously approved for the solar project as a temporary lay down yard for storage materials need for fiber project. And then on March 25th, 2019, the board of supervisors, uh, utilized a section of the Land Development Regulations. That section is 802.03-11. That states renewal of a special exception permit does not require a public hearing unless the original conditions in the permit are changed. However, uh, notice of the renewal will be shown on the board or on the agenda of the board of supervisors. Uh, on March 25th, 2019, the board of supervisors approved a two-year special exception permit with those same conditions. On May 10th, 2021, the board of supervisors approved a two-year special exception permit. However, a condition associated with the March 25th, 2019 permit uh, was required to be modified and therefore that section 802.03-11 was not utilized. Uh, the, and then on April 24th, most recently, uh, April 24th, 2023, excuse me, the board supervisors approved a two-year extension of the special exception permit per section 802.03-11 of the regulations. The expiration date for the current temporary special exception permit is April 24th, 2025. Uh, per the written request associated with the April 23, uh, 2023 extension. Bark stated that they're going to develop a long-term plan for this portion of the property prior to the expiration of the two-year extension. Uh, the portion of the property, uh, for the proposed, uh, equipment, lay down yard and, and proposed warehouse buildings to associate, uh, uh, that use, uh, is located in the 100-year flood plain, uh, technically called the 100-year special flood hazard zone, commonly referred to as a 100-year flood plain. Prior to the construction of the solar facility, Bark obtained a letter of map amendment, that's a Loma from FEMA, that removed portions of the parcel out of the 100-year flood plain, which was eight acres at that time. After speaking with the surveyor that prepared the boundary line adjustment plat and worked with the Loma process, it was clarified that the Loma only pertained to the portion of the property Bark owned at the time. And again, that was eight acres. The Loma did not modify the mapping associated with the two, 7.24 acre portion, uh, that was not owned by Bark at the time. Uh, the pending application is to amend conditions associated with the March 28th, 2016 special exception requesting that the area that was approved as a portion of the solar facility and community field be utilized for equipment, lay down and associated buildings to support Bark operation. Uh, enclosed in your ordinance or excuse me, enclosed in your package, I have the original 2016 plan and associated conditions. I will skip those associated conditions unless needed to review. Uh, as far as the planning commission's history with the most recent, uh, application, on March 12th, 2025, the planning commission opened and continued its public hearing to the April 9th, 2020, uh, April 9th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Um, follow up the questions, concerns expressed at the, at the March meeting. Bark has submitted revised schematic plan showing building elevations, narrative, providing updates to the January 17th, 2025 Bark letter and responses to question and comments from the public and planning commission during the March 12th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. On April 9th, 2025, the planning commission resumed its public hearing. Uh, that was continued from the March 12th, 2025 meeting, the planning commission. Uh, uh, after discussion, a motion was made to recommend approval, uh, with the following conditions. Uh, number one, substantial compliance with the concept plan prepared by Bark Electrical Cooperative dated February 18th, 2015, with 12 revisions with the last revision date being March 26th, 2025. Uh, number two is acceptance of a fully decommissioning agreement by the project owner slash developer and the county within 90 days of approval of the amended special exception permit. Uh, and then A through F reviews, uh, the, uh, what the decommissioning agreement shall include. Uh, number three states, uh, within 90 days of the acceptance of the decommissioning agreement, the project owner slash developer shall submit a bond, irrevocable letter of credit, cash escrow or other appropriate surety in the amount of the estimate as approved by the zoning administrator. And again, A through C, uh, states what, uh, that decommissioning, uh, agreement or the bond should take place. Uh, moving ahead, number four states, uh, as recommended by the planning commission, number four states, no razor or bob wire shall be used for the security fencing. Number five, chain link fencing shall be green or black rubber coated with a minimum of height of seven feet and shall be installed around the perimeter as shown on the concept plan dated February 18th, 2015, uh, with 12 revisions with the last revision date being March 26th, 2015. Uh, number six of the recommended conditions, privacy slats at minimum shall be 78 inches in height and shall be installed and maintained on the chain link fencing along Big Spring Road, Fredericksburg Road and West Midland Trail. Number seven, any outdoor lighting shall meet the requirements of section 1303 lighting ordinance. All lighting associated with the equipment yard, uh, lay down yard, uh, three-sided building and warehouse slash shop late maintenance shall be on motion sensors. Number eight, any replacement poles or new communication towers shall be made of wood. Number nine, any power lines connecting the bark, uh, excuse me, connecting the solar array to the bark lines and fiber line shall be installed underground as depicted on the concept plan dated February, uh, 8th, 2015. 12 revisions, last revision date of March 26th, 2025. Uh, number 10 states all existing vegetation on the property along Big Spring Drive, uh, excuse me, all existing vegetation on the property along Big Spring Drive, Fredericksburg Road and West Midland Trail, trail shall be preserved. All plantings shall be maintained in healthy condition. All proposed plantings, except for the plantings associated with the median area of, of, uh, of the existing entrance to the lay down yard on Big Spring Road shall be installed within one year of approval of the special exception permit. Number 11, as recommended by the planning commission is buildings, building buildings shall be consistent with the building elevations titled B A R C Electrical Conceptual Plans Warehouse Shop Late Maintenance and B A R C, uh, electric, uh, conceptual plans for the three-sided building for covered storage parking. The buildings may be smaller in size and height, but shall not be larger in size and height than shown on the concept plans uh, with the appropriate date. Uh, the warehouse shop late maintenance building shall be constructed within six years of the date of approval of the special exception permit. If constructed, the three-sided building for covered storage parking shall be constructed within eight years of approval of special exception permit. Number 12, approval contingent upon Virginia Department of Transportation, BDOT, erosion segment controlled management, building department, tourism corridor overlay, board approvals and all other state and federal regulations. And find, uh, and, and the, the final condition, uh, associated with the recommendation is number 13, vehicle maintenance at the storage yard shall be restricted to minimal activities that do not generate excessive noise such as checking fluid levels, tire pressure adjustments, battery changes, noisy operations, including major repairs and engine revving are prohibited onsite. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Bill, Mr. Bill Buchanan, uh, CEO with the Electrical Cooperative.
Thank you.
Okay, a lot of stuff there, a lot of stuff going on in that. Um, so a couple of things I want to, that I, I would like to kind of point out and just for clarification and maybe, maybe even just a little bit of, of education on to, um, the, the, the request to make this, you know, permanent lay down yard, uh, really revolves around two points. Bark, Bark Electric Cooperative and Bark Connects, um, which is our fiber broadband company. And I think it's important to explain just so there's, it's kind, it can be kind of confusing, but Bark Electric Cooperative is owned by its members. It's the, the, the members that, that are, we serve for electric service are the owners of the cooperative. There's, it's not, it's not a, uh, investor owned utility. It's a, it's a cooperative. Bark Connects is a subsidiary of that, of that cooperative and wholly, it's, it's a wholly owned subsidiary, but it is not a cooperative. It is a, it is a standalone entity. So that being said, I think, um, I think it's, you know, one of the, one of the things when I think about, um, the Bark Electric Cooperative, Bark serves 13,000 meters across Rockbridge Bath and parts of Highland and Allegheny Counties. And if you use the 2024 census information, there's, uh, 2.32 people per household in, in the Rockbridge Census. So we're, we're equating to approximately 30,000 people who benefit from Bark Electric Cooperative, getting their electric service. Bark Connects serves some of those people, not all of them. But Bark Connects also serves people who are not Bark members. And a lot of people in Cars Creek are not members that are served by Bark Electric Cooperative. They're, they're non-member customers of Bark Connects or the fiber business. And the reason I think it's important to, to make that differentiation is that, um, providing them broadband to Rockbridge County was, was kind of a collective effort by the county and Bark and other ISPs. So I think it's important that, and, and along the way, the whole goal, I think originally when this was first put into place is lay down yard, put material, we were going to get all these grants. You know, they're, they were, they were made available through the state. We were going to get all these grants and we were going to build this, you know, as fast as we could. Unfortunately, grants never came to fruition, but, but Bark members continued to build fiber broadband to people who were both members and non-members on the backs of only the members. There was no, there was no grants coming through. Recently, we have gotten a couple of grants, just this last year, a batty grant and potentially a USDA grant. It's, we're still waiting to hear if that one is actually going to be, if it's going to be pulled back or not. But I think it's important that the reason that we need this lay down yard is to continue to build. We have over 500 members that are still, that are in Rockbridge County that still do not have access to broadband. And I just, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that that's, that's a lot of people that don't have an access to anything. So, uh, and, and, and if you take the, the same census information, 83.4% of the households within Rockbridge County still do not, do not have access to broadband. And a number of those people are our members because they're almost all rural and they're the most expensive, highest cost people to, to get broadband access. So the lay down yard is pretty critical for the, for the continuation of us building broadband. If these, if these grants don't come through, there's a, there's bead funding available. If that doesn't come through, the only way we can build it is to slow everything way down and because it's again, being built on the backs of the members. Um, the, the other thing I think that's really important is from the electric side for those, for those uh, individuals, residences of Rockbridge County that are Bark Electric Co-op members. When a storm goes through and we have, you know, whether it's a, you know, direct line winds, whether it's, uh, ice, snow, whatever it is, that's, that's knocking trees down and taking lines out. All of that, a lot of times it's, we're breaking off poles, we're breaking crossarms, we're, we're, we're busting conductor. And to have a lay down yard and have all of that material in the center of Rockbridge County makes all the difference in the world to us. And, and from a safety aspect, it takes our guys, if, if they have to drive in, in terrible conditions in the middle of the night and drive over to the Millboro Lay Down Yard to, to get a pole to bring back over to Rockbridge County to replace it, all it's going to do is number one, is going to extend restoration times terribly. And I think it's, it's another reason why the lay down yard is so critical to us. So that being said, um, uh, you know, the purpose is again, keeping material there, keeping it, keeping it where it's close, making it for new services, repairing old services and, and replacing services as storms blow through. Um, we do store some equipment down there and, and again, the nice, the, the part about having covered storage would be, extends the life of our equipment. Digger, Digger Derrick's can run $400,000 anymore, pretty easy. Uh, bucket trucks, same thing, 300, 304,000, $400,000 depending on the size. And all of that equipment is paid for by our members. It's, it's all, that's all part of their rate base. That's how their rates are calculated. So, you know, the longer we can make that stuff last, the better it is for our membership. I think that's, unless you have other questions as far as the application, that's, that's all I had to highlight there.
I think I missed something. You said something about 83%.
Of the. 83.4.
Do not have internet?
Correct.
83% of your customers are.
83% of people in Rockbridge County do not have access to broadband according to the 2024 census.
I, I think that's just the destination of the upload and download speeds. People may have internet, but.
Yeah, they could have, they could have internet. They could have dial-up. They could have a DSL service. Um, it pigeon, pigeons, carrot, carrot pigeons, I suppose. I don't.
I've got just a couple of questions. And the proposal says the building will be 150 by 100. And then, uh, exam, and the sample picture says it's 120 by 60. Do we know which it is?
The, I know that the, the actual example picture that we had is, was because there were some questions and concerns about it, what it's going to look like.
Right.
And it was the concern that it was going to be, uh, you know, an industrial warehouse like, uh, I suppose a Walmart production. production center or something, but it's, it's actually was, we just took some drawings that, uh, and put them together based off of a, off of a kind of barn.
I'm just looking at the flyer there under building specs. Do, do we know whether it's going to be a hu- a hundred and fifty by a hundred or a hundred and twenty by sixty?
I believe it's list, it's limited to the one fifty.
Yeah, it's limited to the one fifty by a hundred.
Because if it was.
That's on the plan, on the, the actual, the actual footprint, right, plan that you have shows it a hundred and fifty by a hundred.
Okay.
The, the barn, the barn drawing was just to show clarification that it could be, that it could have an agricultural look to it.
All right. So. And I, I, I like the building that we were proposed. So all the stuff that's on the ground now would be moved inside the building with the exception of the pole, which would be behind the building in between the.
Collection center.
So they would be totally out of view, the poles, but everything else it's, I don't want to say scattered, but that you have that you can see.
Yep.
Would then become put away.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be under roof. And, and part of that too, when we were, when we were going through this, part of that was, you know, identifying that there, there is a lot of material out there. We have, we have reels, wooden reels that, you know, they'll sit there and they, and they rot and then they're, they're almost, well, they're, they are impossible to use and it's just a waste of material. So, so we, you know, getting things under roof is, is very beneficial.
So it's very, everything's going to be on the wo- on the roof except for the poles.
Correct.
Is that clarified in here that, that it will all be in, inside?
I, I, if, if it's, if it's not, it, it, I mean, I, I intended it to be, but the drawing shows the, the buildings and then it shows some green space and, and it shows, I think the only place we showed anything being, being considered the, the lay down material was the poles sitting outside between the building and the.
And the vehicles would be parked over.
Like the lineman's personal vehicles. Yeah.
And as, as far as runoff, do we know how that's going to be handled yet?
We would still have to do a study on the, on the, uh, the floodplain and, and so that's, again, that could certainly, that could reduce the size of the building. That could change, it could change what that would have to be in terms of, of how it would have to be constructed. Would it have, would it have, you know, venting, the proper venting for flooding and things like that? But that's, to, to me, that was, you know, my understanding of where we were going was to, was to get it permanent. And then, and then we would still have to go through all those, all of those same, same, uh, uh, requirements to get the, to get the building approved.
Just the comment is, I, I, you have been very good to work with, uh, as well as, as Chris. I thi- I think the problem has been with your predecessors, uh, and it, it kind of left a bad taste in some people's mouths and there's nothing we, you can do about that. So personally, I just want to make sure that everything is lined up so that it's going to happen the way we you say it's going to happen and we say it's happened. And, and I, and I think, um, many of your neighbors, in fact, I got an email in support while I was sitting here. I've gotten several, uh, that had questions. Uh, some were legitimate questions. Some were statements that were mistaken, uh, in my opinion. So, um, I know usually we do things where you approve and then you get some of these things, but I think some of us would like to see. Big thing is, is the floodplain, are you going to have to put a retention pond in? Or if you're going to have to make your building smaller, that's a kind of important things for us to know. But, uh, we don't, at least I don't want to do anything that's going to slow down the fiber production as you're doing it. Cause you're right, it's, uh, I mean, I, I gotta admit I have it and it's like night and day when you have that compared to anything dial up satellite or anything. So I, I, I think, uh, that's all I have right now.
Kit, wha- what about this? What we can do is open the public hearing. We've all heard lots of comments. Some of the people here might be bringing those up. I have a list of things that, that we need to have clarified here. Um, we'll do that and then we'll bring you back, answer these questions.
Okay.
They may have, would that?
Thank you.
Then I will open the public hearing.
Uh, yes ma'am. Uh, first signed up is Catherine Daniel, uh, followed by Matthew Daniel.
Hi, I'm Catherine Daniel from Cars Creek. My family has loved this area since when I dated my husband when he was a V M I cadet. And we were lucky enough to purchase an eighteen fifty's farmhouse in Cars Creek in two thousand and sixteen. We shop regularly at the Cars Creek Community Center and we pick blueberries up the road. Our friend continues to have his cows graze on our property and has assisted us in reef fencing so that our cows can no longer go in the creek. We are very, very fortunate to live in such a beautiful place. I've read and I know you all envision a community where rural character, scenic beauty and agricultural roots are respected and protected. And that you espouse a mission to establish policies which will promote protection of our rural environment. The comprehensive plan states that Cars Creek is designated a rural village area and that incompatible land uses are not encouraged in the rural planning areas. Although it's not the intent to prohibit commercial development, they have to be able to absorb and or buffer the proposed uses in a manner that does not deter from the surrounding rural planning areas. A special use exemption for the Bark property will undoubtedly deter the surrounding area. It would affect the current and future attempts to provide enhanced community involvement and amenities without providing anything of value to the residents of Cars Creek. Even though a promise had been made for a community field originally, we've never seen that. Not only will buildings that are almost thirty feet high be a visual blight, the proposed traffic changes, which have not been mentioned, will affect everyone, especially when making trips into the collection and trash center. And very importantly, what ill effects could result to our creek? I think the studies need to be done before we approve anything, especially since it's in a food, uh, floodplain. After months of struggling with the restrictions and regulations to open a small fifty person meeting space in our barn that we're restoring, we found the process to be exhausting. If we make tiny local startups that enhance our community adhere to a multitude of restrictions, why would we just toss aside our entire comprehensive plan when a commercial enterprise asks for special treatment? This is not a special exception. It is a change in zoning that could snowball. We appreciate the services that Bark provides, but they can and should build their large storage warehouse buildings in a designated zone elsewhere in Rockbridge County. They do not have to go to Millboro. There are many potential sites close to the center of Rockbridge County that aren't going to disrupt a rural community. Thank you. Thank you.
Matthew Daniel, followed by Tim Ellis.
Hi, I'm Matt Daniel and what she said, what she said. I, I won't be, uh, three minutes. I'll be much, uh, much, much quicker than that. In two thousand and sixteen, we decided to buy and build in Rockbridge County in Cars Creek specifically because Cars Creek is, Cars Creek is idyllic. We're proud to live there. We're lucky to live there. The aesthetics, the neighborly friendship, the rural vibe that we have, citizens, small business focus that is advertised and embraced by a local government. All of that makes small town America and would make us proud to live here. What Bark is suggesting is not that. There was no mention of the height of the building. Kathy just did, but thirty feet high, way above the links, the, the, the chain link fence that's going around there. You've got a business that's next door that's going to be ill affected. So big spring, it, a wonderful venue for weddings and meetings and et cetera. Um, it will adversely affect their business. No mention at all of access to the field, or I'm sorry, the, the barn uh, and the station that they're putting in there. No accent, no discussion about that at all. I think the proposal is to go through the, uh, through the trash center, the recycle center. And in order to do that, that's going to create a huge mess. I don't think anybody's thought about that. How in the world could a corporation come here and provide you a drawing and it's not accurate? How could you accept that? Hundred and fifty feet by a hundred, hundred and twenty by sixty? I don't know. No mention of the height of the building. No mention of the access into the property, none of that. Your own vision embraces all of that small, small town America that, uh, that we just talked about, or that I just talked about and Kathy mentioned. All of these things, all of those things make Car Creek what it is. As, as, uh, as Kathy said, there are available commercial zoned properly properties that are uninhabited within, of, of the size necessary within Rockbridge County. I would say pursue that. Look at that. And at the very least, do what you have to do as far as, uh, re- requiring the runoff and, and water surveys, it's, et cetera. I would ask you to vote no to this. At very least, I would ask you to push it off and get better and more information, accurate information. Thank you very much.
Tim Ellis.
My name is Tim Ellis and I live in Cars Creek District. I want to thank you all, first of all, um, for serving on this board. Uh, I'm sure often it's a pretty thankless job. Also appreciate B A R C's service to our community. I am a, a customer of the electric and the high speed internet service and it has been, uh, good. I appreciate that. I'm also pro-business and growth in the county. Uh, myself and my wife both have small businesses in Cars Creek. So I'm not opposed to growth. I am opposed however to this project. Zoning exists in our county to protect and to bring order to growth. As Matt and Kathy stated, there are areas in the county that are already zoned commercial that would fit the bill for exactly what B A R C needs for a lay down yard. I've been to Dominion's Lay Down Yard, uh, multiple times, uh, to pick up things to help with installation of, uh, just this sort of project. Most of it is not undercover. And frankly, most of it doesn't need to be undercover because it, it is installed before the weather affects it. Uh, putting this enormous building in the Cars Creek District in an agricultural area would definitively change the landscape. There are better options that do not require rezoning. Already along Route eleven, there are commercially zoned areas that, uh, could be used today. There's an area for sale right now that's two and a half acres. It's fenced and paved. Um, why is that not something that B A R C could look at? Uh, it's also right along Route eleven where the roadway is better suited for this type of traffic. You know, um, and of course there's, there's a lot of other businesses right there. It's, it's a commercial area. If you allow this exception, it opens doors for more, uh, commercial businesses to seek an exemption from the zoning. Uh, for proof, you need to look no further than this very project. It was started as a temporary permit, uh, which has been approved, uh, reapproved three times at least. And, um, then I'll seek to build a very large permanent structure. So this, this temporary change is being sought to be made permanent. Why should the next commercial venture be denied if this is approved in this area? If, if this, uh, request is approved, the benefit all accrues to one party at the expense of everyone in Cars Creek. This doesn't change our cost of electric service or internet service, uh, doesn't reduce it. This was not what was, uh, proposed in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, again, B A R C has options in the county that, that suit better logistically and aesthetically and maintain a good relationship with our customer base in Cars Creek. Uh, thank you for your time.
Reuben Moore.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm actually Robin. I've got terrible, terrible handwriting. Sorry. I should have been a doctor. Anyway, um, I am, uh, in the Cars Creek District and I am also a member of the Rockbridge County Taxpayers Alliance. Um, Mr. Buchanan provided some interesting information. I think, you know, it's helpful understanding what their needs are. Um, as they try to keep us with power and, um, internet and things like that, but none of it has anything to do with zoning. Um, we have a comprehensive plan for a reason. And disregarding the comprehensive plan erodes its authority using land for agricultural, let's zone for agricultural for industrial uses blatantly ignoring what was set forth in the comprehensive plan. Bark's lack of long-term planning is no excuse to undermine the beauty and agricultural opportunities of Cars Creek. Again, Bark's lack of long-term planning, a long-term planning solution gives them no right to convert in temporary use into a permanent entitlement. County officials have a duty to local families and businesses in Cars Creek and the rest of Rockbridge County that follow and reflect the, the goals of the comprehensive plan. Bark has the resources to relocate its lay down yard to a location that would be more appropriate as we've heard there's many options in the area. I am asking permission for Bark to receive a fifth special exception to be denied. Thank you very much.
Don Jeffers. Steve Hart.
Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Go hear from a lot of our family tonight. It's pretty important to us. Per section five oh two, five oh one point zero two, the county's land development regulations, approval of a special exception requires the board to make a finding of fact that the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and policies of the county and in the public interest. The board should deny Bark's request because the request does not meet the standard. First criteria, comprehensive plan. The map on page two fifty-nine of the Rockbridge County Comprehensive Plan designates Cars Creek Community as a rural village area surrounded by rural planning area. Also, everything in the Cars Creek community, except for the mountains, is zoned A two agricultural and general use. Page two sixty of the comprehensive plan states that the county's goal is, quote, agricultural areas are to be maintained and incompatible land uses such as large scale commercial and industrial developments, dense residential developments and their public improvements will be discouraged in rural areas, end quote. So clearly Cars Creek is a rural agricultural area and the proposed use is a large scale commercial industrial development, which means placing this development in this location is incomprehensible, is incompatible with the comprehensive plan, thus failing the first criteria. Second criteria, county policy. Section six oh two point oh three nine, the land development regulations also allows for public utilities to use by special exception in areas zoned A two. So perhaps this applies. Some public utility functions like power distribution lines and transformer stations must physically be located where the service is delivered. However, Bark's proposed uses involve buildings, storage, parking, maintenance and administration. Moving these functions five miles away to other properties appropriately zoned and available in Rockbridge County does not impact Bark's ability to deliver the service. For section six oh three point oh one, the intent of the A two district is to preserve and promote agricultural forestry and rural character. Special exceptions for public utilities which advance this intent and the goals of the comprehensive plan, such as power lines and sub stations, should probably be approved. But since this proposed exception moves us away from our goals by unnecessarily industrializing the countryside, should be denied. I'll be followed by my wife Christina, who will continue with our family's thoughts.
Christina Hart.
Good evening, Christina Hart, Cars Creek District. The third criteria is public interest. Considering only the proposed site, there are several issues against the public interest. The proposed entrance and exit increase the potential points of vehicle conflict from four to nine. And they add a large commercial vehicles to the traffic pattern in perpetuity. This adds accident risks for all of us and it is not in our interest. Furthermore, both the Powers and Hart families have spent lots of money installing entrances for our own businesses. And the proposed entrance for heavy commercial vehicles will detract from our business investments. All the people building recently in Cars Creek have done so with great care. To create structures that fit within the culture and character of our community. The visual impact of thirty-five thousand square feet of buildings that are inconsistent with all our other structures. In this area is not in the interest of our community. The purpose of zoning is to allow people to plan and invest time and money. With a reasonable expectation of how the area will develop. Lots of us in Cars Creek are trying at great expense to ourselves to build a thriving rural community. That's a wonderful place to live, raise our children and operate local place-based businesses. To support our neighbors. Dropping an industrial facility right in the middle of a community we are building is not in the interest of the Cars Creek community. Therefore, according to the community's own criteria, this request, or the county's. This request should be denied because it is not in accordance with a comprehensive plan and it is not in the public interest. While that argument is sufficient for denial of this proposal, here are other considerations. First, Bark is going to tell us that they can't provide good service to their members without this lay down yard. That is simply not true because before they had this lay down yard, they provided service. They also don't need this particular lay down yard, they need a lay down yard. Nothing in their operation required the yard to be at Highland Bell. The yard can be in any of the areas in the county's owned business, industrial or commercial. And that's where it should be. Bark, Rockbridge County and everyone else knew this eight years ago. And we know it today. My comments are to be concluded by our daughter Felicity.
Felicity Hart.
Felicity Hart, Curse Creek District. Through four iterations of two-year special exceptions, the residents of Curse Creek were told that the use as a lay down yard was temporary. It was approved as temporary because everyone knew it did not fit permanently. And what is proposed tonight is anything but temporary. We are going to learn whether temporary actually meant temporary or whether it was just a ploy to placate us until Bark could get. By default, what they could not have gotten by decision eight years ago. Third, Bark knew this moment was coming two thousand nine hundred and twenty days ago. And yet they have dropped this plan in such a way that we have a total of six days to consider it. On that basis alone, they should be told no. Forcing a decision of this magnitude in such a short period of time serves neither the Curse Creek community nor the member owners of Bark. Finally, this is a problem that did not and does not have to happen. What Bark proposed is an inherently commercial industrial function which belongs in a commercial industrial zoned area. Bark knew this ten years ago when they acquired property zoned A two in an area that. The county prioritized for agricultural continuity, not large scale industrial development. The county knew it when they gave Bark four temporary special exceptions. Just because Bark is a large corporate entity does not mean they get the rules altered to suit them. Our comprehensive plan and zoning focus industrial commercial functions in areas zoned for these functions and reserves agricultural. Agricultural areas for agricultural functions. If our comprehensive plan and zoning are going to promote and foster development, then we all need a reasonable expectation that they will be followed. Thank you for listening to the members of the Hart family on this issue that will affect our family for generations.
Trip Army.
Hello again. Trip Army, still in Cars Creek. Got to read from this one, I've got more quotes. And also, I didn't copy Kathy's, uh, written statement, uh, at all, but, uh. I just want to, want to be upfront about that. Uh, however, I did, uh, today reread the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors mission statement, which was adopted March eleventh, twenty thirteen. And Kathy quoted from that, but I'll, I'll actually read it verbatim, at least the, the first couple of sentences. We, the members of the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors envision a community defined. By first-class educational programs for youth and adults enhanced through widespread and quality access to broadband connectivity. Where our citizens enjoy a healthy, safe environment where rural character, scenic beauty and agricultural roots are respected, protected and balanced with sensible. And manage growth to include high technology development and promotion of local agriculture and outdoor recreation as part of the economic base. It goes on from there. The mission statement is supported by the comprehensive plan and vice versa. The comprehensive plan is not a mere suggestion. I'm going to provide some direct quotes made by Commissioner Sandridge during last week's planning commission meeting, this time specifically regarding Bark. These are also on the YouTube recording of the meeting, starting at three hours, fifty-six minutes and, and four seconds. Quote, and this is Commissioner Sandridge. I don't know where we lost our compass, but you read the comprehensive plan. Quote, this is an ag use, you can call it what you want. Quote, we created the problem, how do you fix it? And that's what we're being asked to do. Commissioner Sandridge also said, quote, you got something that was supposed to be temporary, it's not temporary, how do you correct that? So can each of you honestly say that you're fulfilling this mission statement by granting a special exemption for an industrial use in an agricultural zoned area? Even by special exemption, an industrial use is not compatible to be cited in an ag zone. Are you willing to bet that this is the last step in your travel down this slippery slope? If you grant this exception, you are setting a dangerous precedent. This isn't just about Cars Creek, it's about all of Rockbridge County. Do the right thing, fulfill your mission statement, honor the mission statement, honor the comprehensive plan.
Steve Donald.
Thank you for having me. Um, my name is Steve Donald, I live on Stillhouse Drive, about a mile and a quarter from the proposed site. And I have a U-Pick blueberry farm there. And one of my main concerns is, uh, the proposed in grass egress on Fredericksburg Road. Normally during the season, I have three to four thousand people that come out there and they're going to use that road. So I'm concerned about. Uh, pole trucks, other vehicles in and out. So that is one of the big concerns. The other is more anecdotal. Of those three to four thousand people that come every year, I constantly hear, this is a gem of Rockbridge County. And they're not just talking about the blueberry farm, they're talking about the Cars Creek Farmers Market, the whole area there. And the proposed industrial. Uh, use in, in the middle of that just sort of blows it out of the water. So I think we should stick with it. If, if there's no strategic or tactical reason for having that yard there. Which I don't believe it is, it's been pointed out, there's plenty of other locations. We should do it somewhere else and keep it agriculture as zoned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Almy.
Becky Almy, member of the Cars Creek Magisterial District and the Rockbridge Taxpayers Alliance. A lot of people have mentioned the comprehensive plan, so I just wanted to read two really quick blurbs regarding. Issues in the past in Virginia where, um, comprehensive plans and their adherence was brought into court cases. Uh, the first is Brookfield, Washington LLC versus County of Fairfax, this was in twenty twenty-five. In this unpublished opinion, the Virginia Court of Appeals upheld Fairfax County's denial of a subdivision plan that proposed a new road contact, connecting some roads. The court found that the proposed road violated the county's comprehensive plan, which explicitly prohibited such a connection. The decision emphasized that subdivision plans must conform to the comprehensive plan as mandated by Fairfax County. Again, the Virginia State Court of Appeals, uh, I'm sorry, the Supreme Court of Virginia. Didn't let this case go through because it was against the comprehensive plan of Fairfax County. The second case in Stafford County in twenty twenty-one, the Supreme Court of Virginia reversed a lower court, court's ruling. Holding that developers who significantly alter previously approved subdivision plans, such as converting them into cluster developments. Or maybe examples like this one, must undergo a new review to ensure compliance with the county's comprehensive plan under Virginia code, et cetera. The court clarified that prior approvals do not exempt developers from subsequent reviews when substantial changes are made. Highlighting the comprehensive plan's role as a regulatory tool, not just a mere guideline. And I'm just asking that we would, like my friends here, deny this request on behalf of its violation of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buddy Powers.
Buddy Powers, Cars Creek, um, I'm neighbors with Bark at Big Spring Farm. I have a bunch of concerns, I just want to highlight a few things. One would be the general lack of clarity in, in their site plan. And I think they're, I think by their own admission, just the lack of clarity. Things like real building elevations would be something I would expect in a site plan at this scale. I, a few years ago, presented a much smaller site plan for some cottages at our farm, it had real elevations, real dimensions. The actual building, not like a flyer from a website. Um, that kind of thing is really important. I think, uh, in general, the details, you asked about is stuff going to be stored outside? If you look closely at the plan, there's lots of places where stuff is going to get stored outside. And I think the history to briefly touch on is, uh, that there's a plan and then it is either violated or heavily deviated from. Their first, Bark's first site plan before, uh, Bill and Chris were at the helm, so their predecessors. Before they were a year into that site plan, their predecessors violated it by deforesting a huge chunk of the property. I think you all know about that part of the history. Uh, the county helped them by removing from the deed of transfer a restrictive covenant that said they couldn't expand their operations when they bought that land next to them. I have a easement that I think you're all aware of that restricts them from expanding off the original Highland Bell property. So this whole site plan would put me in a head-to-head path on that, which I don't, um, which I don't enjoy. Um, and, uh, so there's the history part of it that I think you might sense from everyone that's, what is this really going to be? And I think someone made a great comment of, if you think, if you were to approve this, I would not think this is the last time something from Bark is going to come before you like this. Because it has been, uh, over and over and over, more and more and more, and there's not been a clarity to what it really will be. And I understand within reason that projects evolve, you know? I've experienced that in my own life and I get it, but this is not an evolution, this is a huge jump for, uh, for, to go from. A really minimal site plan, a solar array, some office space, park trucks, lay down yard behind the building, that was their original site plan. To go to, okay, we're only temporarily going to lay stuff out front just so we can install the fiber to now, actually, we're going to build thirty-five thousand square feet of warehouse space potentially. And to put that in context, the size of our barn, and it's one of the bigger barns in the valley, is in our little section of the valley. It's only twenty-five hundred square feet maybe, so this is a substantial structure. It will not blend in, no matter how much you make it look like the horse center, it's going to be like you put a horse center building right on the edge of Route sixty. And Fredericksburg Road and Cars Creek, and it absolutely will change the character of that intersection that everyone's talked about. It's just such a staple of Cars Creek. Last thing I wanted to mention is the environmental concerns. I think there needs to be a lot more information and clarity about that. My entire farm is all downstream from them. And obviously, if they design these buildings to be built in the flood zone, which you can do, there'll be breakaway structures, whatever is going to be stored in them could be washed downstream. Will there be any chemicals in there? Will, will, will the transformers be stored inside? Could they wash downstream? There's lots of concerns for just my property and farm that I have. Other brief details, getting really specific on what the lighting is going to look like. I think Bill and Chris honestly are trying to be good neighbors and are figuring out what that looks like. But they're going to be gone someday and their predecessors had that whole property lit up like a Christmas tree. I mean, there was uplighting on the building, it was very unneighborly at the time, especially knowing the kind of business I run. So I worry that once these guys are gone, that are great to work with, we're going to end up with another problem in front of us because of this general lack of clarity with this plan. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Higgins.
I'm Mary Ann Higgins, also Curse Creek. And although I've only lived here for just over twenty years, my son is at least sixth generation on our family farm. So the history of Rockbridge County is very important to us. We choose to continue living here because of the agricultural area and it's my son's future and his son's and theirs after that, that I'm thinking of. We're Bark members and because of our remote location on the side of North Mountain, we're often one of the last to have power restored. It's just difficult to get to us. We are one of the five hundred or so members that don't have access to Bark Fiber. We now have Starlink, so we do have broadband internet now. We are directly impacted by this lay down yard being there and the fiber plan, and I am opposed to this project. When Bark acquired the land ten years ago, they were fully aware it was zoned A two, not suitable or zoned for industrial use. To circumvent that, they applied for several temporary exceptions, as you've heard about tonight. Within the first two years of filing their original exception application and being approved, they were caught in violation of that. And what happened? The then board helped them amend it. They just had it amended, they've been disingenuous at best and dishonest in their actions at worst. They were, the requested commercial industrial use does not follow the comprehensive plan, as you've heard, Cars Creek is a rural village area surrounded by rural planning areas. This industrial use would negatively impact existing businesses that do fit into the comprehensive plan and the A two current zoning. Talked about the flood plain, a thirty thousand square foot building is a large impervious sur- surface. How's that going to impact runoff into Cars Creek to the Maury River, where we already have several impaired waterways in the county? They couldn't build the community field because of drainage issues. And what about the safety of the proposed entrance? People have talked about that this evening as well. It completely changes the use of that intersection from residential and farming traffic to commercial industrial vehicles. There's plenty of industrial land available in the county and for these reasons and others that you've heard tonight, strongly oppose this application. Thank you for your time.
Bill Russell.
Russell, Cars Creek and Rockbridge Peck Taxpayers Alliance. Uh, Jenny Court, Supreme Court says that legislative intent behind zoning ordinance is frustrated with special use permits granted in contravention of the ord- ordinances underlying policy goals. Particularly worrisome is particularly worrisome to the courts. Repeated renewals and expansions of the same special exception, especially when the original basis has failed, invite. has failed invite legal scrutiny. Courts could review such actions as de facto rezoning without formal procedures, a misuse of special exception powers for permanent industrial level product activities, a violation of neighboring landowners' expectation of zoning certainty, violations of the comprehensive plan under Virginia Code fifteen point two dash two two three two. Local actions must conform with the locality's adopted comprehensive plan. Persistent industrial uses in an agricultural district, especially when those uses expand over time, may conflict with the plan's land use map and intent. Courts have struck down local decisions not in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. To quote again the Supreme Court in a differences case, the comprehensive plan is more than aspirational. It is a legal guidebook. Actions inconsistent with it face legal jeopardy. This contrary to some statements we've heard is not a philosophical document. Uh specific concerns with Bark's special exception history, the original special exception was granted as time limited and timed and tied to specific solar development use. The solar project now is being described is in trouble and no longer fulfills its original rationale. The county has approved three, three renewals plus the original application despite lack of progress and without justification. The current request seeks two additional industrial use buildings and intensification not contemplated in the original zoning. The property remains zoned agricultural and continued industrial activity is incompatible with the designation. This pattern undermines public faith in zoning as a protective tool for rural character and property values. Sends a signal to developers that industrial creep via exceptions is tolerated. Puts future zoning enforcement at risk by establishing precedent for unending renewals. Could provoke litigation by residents or landowners asserting property rights violations or zoning ordinance evasion. I recommend to deny the request is inconsistent with zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and prior commitments. Thank you.
Susan White?
I'm Susan White, Cars Creek District. Uh don't have all the fancy words that these folks do, but we do live in the Denmark area there, and I just want to emphasize some of the points made here tonight. Cars Creek is an agricultural agricultural area on purpose. The county and Bark have no right to rezone this area to the commercial industrial business zoning, essentially plunking this thing smackdown in the middle of farmland with the wedding venue next door. An obviously um rural area. So if Bark must have a lay down yard, it should be built in an area already zoned appropriately. There are plenty of those close by. It's been said many times. Um the two things that are greatest important to me is our family has to go through that intersection, quite simply, to get to I sixty four, to get to Lexington. There's no other way to go. So we're going to have to look at that building that doesn't fit in the area every every time we go by. The other and probably greater concern to me is the traffic issue. And has there been a study done about what's going to happen when you start bringing those industrial vehicles in and out of the same entrance as the trash collection entrance? I see it's a of an avoidable danger. If you just put this thing in an appropriate area instead of here. Um we do appreciate the service that Bark provides us, but they've had ten years um to figure this out and to find a place that's already zoned for this. Um I don't appreciate the, we'll have our corporate way mentality. When citizens come with zoning issues, we have to follow the rules. They should have to follow the rules too. Um and we'd ask you to just do the jobs that you were charged with in these positions and follow the comprehensive plan. It's really quite simple. There's just too many issues with this proposal. I ask you to say no. Thank you.
Andrew Hart?
My children are literate, so you'll just have to hear from me. Andrew Hart, Cars Creek District. Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name's Andrew Hart. My wife and I are twenty six year old landowners whose property situated atop three hundred yards to the west of the current Bark lay down yard. Uh over the past ten years, I've watched the Highland Bell School go from a place where families often met to play on the field to having the solar field, a fence, and a large unsightly laid on yard to now the request to build two massive buildings. Many of my concerns and thoughts have been shared by my neighbors. One that I have had is that these buildings will be directly across or on the same side of the street as the commemorative plaque of the Cars Creek massacre from seventeen forty two. And as many have talked about, the the character of our community will have a horse center building and a historic plaque, and it doesn't, doesn't sit right with me, living on the land of one of the people that was uh murdered then. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Maxwell?
Good evening, Jamie Maxwell from Cars Creek. Um just to, I guess, to keep it a little shorter, I'd like to also state what what Tim Ellis said, and I know Tim Ellis, but I wasn't aware what he was going to say about all alternate sites, particularly industrial sites down along Route eleven. And this gentleman's thoughts about um the law and how applies to zoning. I think my point, um how do you boil a frog? The reason why I ask that, that's based on a nineteen fifties experiment. As a psychology undergrad um student, they took a frog and if you placed it, found that if you placed it into a pot of water that was boiling, it would quickly jump out. If you placed it in a pot of water and slowly turned the heat up, then that frog would never jump out, even though it had the opportunity to do so. I say that because in reference to Rockbridge County and zoning, um that's, I've been here for twenty six years now. That's kind of what I see happening. We'll take a spot. Um it'll be agricultural two, for example, or something along those lines will be a special exception applied. You'll have an industrial site, and then it slowly grows, and it slowly grows and it expands. And it wasn't the intent of any of the parties, and some of the initial uses of that land would be consistent with the land. But at some point, as people retire, move away, and things expand, that use becomes inconsistent with the community. The zoning itself, the people um have a right to to rely on. Respectfully, I say to this, to this body, you represent the people, the authority here comes from really from the United States Constitution handed down to the Constitution of Virginia, from the Constitution of Commonwealth of Virginia to this community, to this body, to legislate the way that you do on behalf of all of us. And if, when you do the final reading of that, this body's primary goal is to do that job for the health, welfare, and benefit of the citizens. And zoning itself, um it, I'm a fan of zoning because what it does is it actually saves us, the community members, money long term in that over here, we've got residential, over here, we've got industrial, over here, we've got agricultural, and we can kind of say and show where the money needs to be spent for roads, for infrastructure, for police, for fire department, all those things. And maybe most importantly, all the folks that come here to invest their hard earned money or grew up here working very diff- uh very hard, uh invest their hard earned money in their home, their farms, their the things that they rely on, trusting that the the regulations being zoning is going to be in place. Zoning's been with us since nineteen twenties, um the nineteen fifties here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's been fairly strong. Um I I would ask that 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 this board consider that, and as in other areas, let's let's not become a fraud. Thank you.
Randall Potter?
Hi, um Randall Potter, Cars Creek District. Um moved here about three years ago. Lived all over the country, uh lived in eleven, twelve different states. Been a part of a lot of different projects over the years that have been similar to this one um on the other side of the fence. Now it's, I'm on the other side, and it's asking you to say no and not approve the project. My questions with this is what precedent it sets for future development? Having been on the development side and used examples like this in the past to proceed and push forward an agenda doesn't necessarily mean that Bark has a bad agenda. What it does is it sets a precedent for other companies that see only dollar signs and not a community. Um wants to say that in the future, temporary use, some corporation, some entity of trust, uh hires another piece of land and develops a, wants to develop a temporary use for a yard, for a warehousing station, for a trucking, and wants to stop that if this sets the precedent. So in my experience of living in a lot of different places, what I, one of the reasons that attracted us here, because we didn't have to live here, we could live anywhere, was um the community. Places like Cars Creek are an endangered species. They really are. I grew up in a pretty idyllic area, which you wouldn't recognize today because it's full of box retail now, and it was a small town, box retail warehouses, the whole nine yards. And I'm starting to see that this might be the trend out here. So one, how is it neighborly to approve this? It affects rural business. It affects the culture in not just agriculture, the area, but the culture that agriculture creates amongst people and neighbors. And what value does it bring to the community? Is another question I have. So uh in the end, that's, that's really all I have to ask. Uh but don't approve the plan, please.
Thank you.
Summer Potter?
Good evening, Summer Potter, Cars Creek. I left my notes at home because I was uh busy farming my agriculturally zoned land, and I lost track of the time. So I am not going to have as polished um or structured words as everybody else here, and I think um everything I wanted to say has pretty well been summed up, but on a personal note, like my husband was saying, we could have moved anywhere. Because of his job, we had the luxury of looking at the map and picking, and Cars Creek is special. It's different. We came from small towns, my husband and I, and they've been so eroded by big businesses and corporations that they are unrecognizable today. My hometown has two highway uh bypasses in it. I I don't know the names of most of the roads, and crime has gone up. Homelessness has gone up. There's problems that come with growth too. So while it can be good, there's two sides to every coin. When we moved here, we made a cross-country move five years ago, and we lived in Lexington for two years while we looked for land. It was a long process because we never wanted to have to do it again. When we chose this place, I reflected on my upbringing in that small town that I once knew, and I told my husband, I want to find a place that has a heartbeat again. So many of these big cities and suburbs, they don't have a heartbeat. Your neighbors don't know each other. We have potlucks. We support each other's businesses first. We're there to lend a hand when it's needed. We can't up and move our homes. It's just not that easy. But Bark has other options that they can exercise. So what I want to leave you with tonight, after everything that's been presented, is if this was sitting at your front doorstep, what decision would you make based on your personal situation where you have to go home to every day? That's all. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all who's signed up.
Let's look online.
We have two hands raised. First one is Granville Higgins. Can you all hear me? Yes. Wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity, uh Board of Supervisors. Thanks for my opportunity to speak here. Um you heard from my wife, you've heard from my friends, the Harts, uh the Almes, you heard from Tim Ellis. These are all my neighbors, my friends. I don't, I don't make this this request lightly. Uh my father worked for B A R C for thirty eight years, started there in nineteen fifty five. He retired in nineteen ninety three. I've lived in the county for fifty five years. Um as my wife stated, Mariana Higgins, she stated that, you know, we've been in this uh this area for a same home, actually, same location for uh five generations. I'm a nineteen eighty nine graduate from Lexington High School. Dan Lyons taught me biology. Uh Bobby Day was my sheriff. Um I'm nineteen ninety three graduate of V M I. Uh my father uh worked tirelessly uh to provide the power uh to the area uh in the surrounding counties, um before they had drones and ATVs and uh Google Maps and all the stuff, when you had to get out and you had to walk the transmission lines by foot and all the ice storms in the snow. What uh B A R C is asking for can be found elsewhere. Uh Mr. Buchanan, uh you know, you seem like, you and Chris seem like upstanding gentlemen, uh and and nothing against you, but we have a history here of continuous uh exceptions, uh lack of adherence to comprehensive plan here. There's access and egress issues, all the things that have been named floodplain concerns, erosion and sediment control concerns that we have. Cars Creek is a rural village. I went to school, I I attended eighth grade right there in the building that you have now as your administrative building. It was Highland Bell Middle School. So understand that uh we've lived in this community. I could live anywhere. I work up in Northern Virginia. Um reason that I couldn't be there, so I know what big city hustle and bustle is all about. I choose to live there on the side of a mountain, you know, in a log house. I like to keep my area rural, and uh I like to support my family and friends uh in in the request to uh please deny this, uh Board of Supervisors. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next, you have Ian Hart.
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm Ian Hart. I'm also in Cars Creek. And uh uh I'd like to call some attention to the fact that this is actually a twofold decision. There's Bark's plans and intentions for their property, but there's also the question of what are the county's plans and intentions for Cars Creek? And I I think we've heard plenty on the first point for now. Let's talk about the second. The uh the purpose of zoning is to group like use structures and land. That means not creating islands of single use uh areas, but but to group them together to share infrastructure and to prevent incompatible land from from being adjacent to other uses. Uh what this decision does is it initiates the industrial zoning potential in Cars Creek. Uh a- as far as I know, i- in this area, for the first time, we don't have other industrially zoned buildings here. So let's talk for a minute about what happens if it goes through. Great, we have a single use exemption island uh for for industrial use surrounded by agricultural properties? Well, that's not how zoning is supposed to work. There's no shared infrastructure there. And it creates a precedent for uh other companies, uh other parcels to follow a similar conversion. Um is it done under a special exemption? Um, is it done under a special exemption? Sure. But if there's other properties available, why can't that argument be made in the future? Um, we rely heavily on precedent for decision-making. Uh, that's why we're having this meeting tonight is because we had a precedent for this land being used this way. Um, if Cars Creek, i- if the county determines that they would like to develop Cars Creek into, uh, some, some industrial potential use, then that's great. But let that come from the county. Let that follow the due process through the county, who are the adults in the room? Don't let one business with its own interest for one piece of property, make that decision to initiate industrial zoning allowances in this area. Um, in addition to that, the only other thing I'd like to say is, uh, as somebody mentioned, Mr. Sandridge said at a previous meeting, um. You know, th- this is a, a problem, how do we solve it? It's not the county's problem to solve, it's BARK's. The county's problem is to maintain, uh, proper control and governance over zoned areas to match its intentions for health, safety and growth of the community. Um, that's about all I got, so thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
No one else has a hand raised?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, Board Members. My name's Tim Goodbar. I reside at one sixteen Denmark Way in Upper Cars Creek in the Cars Creek District. As I stated to the Plan Commission a few nights ago, after sitting in the crowd and listening to this, I feel like a cat at a dog shed. I really do. I, I just cannot understand the opposition. That want, that would want to deny so many people in the county a better service. We've heard a lot of talk about moving, going somewhere else. The sole purpose of B A R C Electric Cooperative is to provide the cheapest electricity possible to its members. And they talk about moving, they already own this piece of land. If they got to go somewhere where it's already zoned commercial. And pay a million, a million and a half dollars for a couple of acres of land, what's that going to do to our electric bill? You've already heard them state that this is a cooperative. Cooperatives do not make money, at the end of the year, if they make money, the patrons receives a dividend check. I've heard a lot of talk here tonight about the comprehensive plan. Electricity is not a part of this comprehensive plan. I know electricity is going to continue to come regardless of what y'all do tonight. But if you look at it favorable upon B A R C, I realize there are some flaws in what they're looking to do. Give them time to straighten their flaws out. It would be a great service to, uh, to the membership of this corporation. I've heard a lot of talk about farmland. I've rode a farm tractor more hours than most anybody in here has ever rode a farm tractor. There ain't nothing farmland about that piece of ground anymore, it's totally destroyed. There's no way in the world you could farm and get anything out of, decide to put a chicken hives or something on it. I'm going to tell you a little story that if you'll let me have a minute to tie it in. At the dead end of Denmark Way lives a young lady of about forty-two years of age. Who is, was in a critical car wreck and injured critically when she was four years old. Her very, every, each and every breath that that young lady draws. Depends upon electricity to make her machine work to breathe for her. She can't feed herself, she can't move, all she can do is swallow and roll her eyes from side to side. My farm. Adjoins their property. This winter, when we were doing some cleanup, due to my negligence, I tore the power line down. And within just a matter of minutes. The crew, less than forty-five, the crew was there. There was a pole broke off. Those materials was at that yard, within a matter of a couple of hours, they had the electricity back on, so that child could have electricity and go back. Her batteries don't last forever. And that's, that's one of those stories that I feel sure a lot of people sitting here don't think that's very important, but that is so important to that young lady. And one other little item I'd like to mention. My family. Has been on Cars Creek ever since nineteen oh four, and I still live on that farm. And we have been members of B A R C Electric Cooperative since the mid to the late nineteen and thirties, when, when electrical power first came through. In the county, and we got that through a co-op, no business was willing to take on the expense to do it like a cooperative did. In closing tonight, I thank you for listening. I'm not a flashy speaker, I've got a lot of friends that, that have spoke, I've got some friends that spoke here tonight. Some of us has already agreed to disagree. And still remain friends. And I, I would, I would like y'all to consider to approve this permit for B A R C, thank you.
Is there somebody else? Um, go ahead. I'll get you in just a sec.
I'm Alan Stowe, uh, South River, I'm probably the only one talking that's not from Cars Creek tonight. But I'm compelled to talk because I listen to people talk and pour their hearts out. And even if it weren't in violating the comprehensive plan or zoning ordinances. How could you possibly vote against the hearts of these people? What they, what they have done, their lives that they've put out and what they're doing in Cars Creek. I haven't experienced, uh, I've experienced some violate me and some rulings against the comprehensive plan since I've lived here for three years. Personally, which have been extremely disappointing. The law, the comprehensive plan and the laws of Virginia and the laws of zoning. Lead me to expect a unanimous denial of this from the, from the board members. Because I think tonight is a display of integrity. It's not about the emotional stuff, it's about what's, what the guidelines are. And, and the guidelines are pretty clear here. So I, I'm asking you, as a member of the Taxpayer Alliance of Rockbridge County. As the President of, uh, Warm Run Citizens Association, to do what is right tonight and deny this. Thank you.
Yes.
Mary Lupcha, um, Cars Creek. I did not intend to speak tonight, so I am wholly unprepared, but I will do my best. Um, I've lived in the area since nineteen ninety-three. When we moved to, um, Cars Creek, Highland Bell was still a middle school, there was really nothing at that intersection. In the time that we've lived here, we've seen an airstrip, we've seen a recycling center, a wedding venue, solar array and, and the, um. The lit, what's currently there with BARK, a lot of changes, so to speak. A lot of points have been made tonight, the floodplain, you all know that Rockbridge County is no stranger to flooding. Uh, I was in East Lexington when the footbridge got washed away from, uh, over the Maury River. And that happens m- more frequently than a hundred years, um, so that's a huge concern. Um, the fact that BARK would show up here tonight, uh, or put forth a site plan that wasn't extremely accurate. And reflective of their plans is unconscionable to me, um, and smacks of what someone else said corporate entitlement. Um, I think the assumption is we want it, so we're going to get it. And, um, I don't say that lightly, we've, we've been, uh, patrons of BARK since we moved here and the service has been fantastic. Um, we've always been happy with, with, um, what they've done for us, so, so I would like to support BARK, but, um. N- not in this situation, this was supposed to be temporary. And, um, I don't have the number right, because I think I've heard several different ones, but it's, uh, this plan has been renewed many, many times, it seems at this point. And, um, I'm wondering what happens if this, if this is allowed, clearly we will move out of temporary when they put up a building of that size. And, um, it sets a precedent for industrialization in our agricultural zone. What happens ten, fifteen years down the road when they need to expand again? You don't have to look very hard at that intersection to see that they're pretty landlocked. Um, do we in- invoke eminent domain so that they can continue to expand? Wha- what is the plan moving forward? I think Ian Hart made a really good point. The county needs to drive this boat, not BARK, and they need to know what their plan is for Cars Creek. You've heard what the citizens would like the plan to be, we want to stick to the agricultural zone that we have, we want to stick to the. The, um, county plan that's in place now. If we veer from that, it should come from the county, not from, uh, an industry, uh, player that, that wants to use our land. Uh, and we need to think very carefully about what happens down the, down the road to this small area that's now been industrialized. If that continues, people are going to lose their farms, so thank you.
Uh, yes, sir.
Cherry Deacon, Cars Creek District, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I'm going to have to say my side of it. Uh, I've been a native of this county for seventy-one years, I've seen a lot of change, a lot of change, and so have all you. BARK has been. Keeping up with the times. And when you get people to keep moving in, and that's fine, there's no problem with that. They gotta have electricity for these new houses, so BARK's gonna have to grow. They got to keep up with the times and that's very important. I was, uh, I got off Interstate today, I was going up to Crown to take a load of logs up our drop off. And I just noticed when I come down the road, there hit the stop sign right there where the, uh, recycle center is, a lot of growth. You don't see, you don't see stuff over there, you don't see buildings, you don't see, uh, trucks. You go down a car, uh, go down the, the hollow, the, the Beans Bottom Road, and you got greenery, it's been planted. And you, you, you don't pay attention no more, people have gotten used to BARK. And that's true with anything that goes in, people get adapted to it. Um, when I s- uh, come to the stop sign, I took a right and went with a west on eight seventy. I looked upon a hill, there's two buildings of being built up there, they were shore higher than thirty foot. Uh, what I'm saying is. People are talking about how high the building is, but the BARK needs the height for the trucks. The trucks has got booms on them, they got a load poles, they got a load equipment at night when it's zero, snow's blowing. People are calling their lights is out. Uh, they gotta get in there and, and, and get things loaded. And furthermore, these trucks need to be garaged because they got hydraulic systems on them, they got booms on them. And those booms don't really want to work a whole lot when it's cold, I know, I run one. So the storage is very important and the height is probably important to them. I don't know how high it's going to be, but I know you got to have height to work, I know that. But BARK is trying to do what's right, I know people that work for them. Uh, over these years, we've had a lot of, we've run a sawmill over on the opposite side of the county, uh, on the, next to Carriage Town Way. Uh, we use a lot of electricity and they very faithful in keeping us going and we appreciate that. But people get used to seeing new stuff. I know it's upsetting to people, I understand that. Um, but people will drive by it ten times, they won't see it nine times. So I'm for supporting whatever BARK needs, this county is growing and we probably going to need more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Sure.
Um, I've kind of got a unique perspective here and, and this isn't meant to go influence one way or the other, but I, I don't think I could sleep at ni- at night. If I didn't, um, make the distinction between my experience with BARK and a, and a, and a corporate entity. Um, uh, Mr. Buchanan did say earlier that, you know, the, the census said there was, I think eighty-three percent. Um, uh, that was from the census and that's, that's kind of a different, different data set, it's, it's, I'm sure it's very accurate. Uh, but that number has gotten better since, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and, and a lot of it due to, to BARK's efforts. And, uh, and I've, I've dealt with corporate interests and some of them very good, but I've never been on the phone with one at. One AM or whenever it was, uh, trying to get these, these grants done, so I'm not trying to influence anything, but. Um, uh, I'll echo Mr. Powers' statement that, that these two gentlemen and everybody I worked with at BARK is. Has been, uh, great in partnering with us on the, the fiber, that, I just, I had to say that.
Thank you. Is there, yes, yes, please.
Summer Bynes on Cars Creek area, I'm sorry, I missed your name, Summer Bynes, Cars Creek. Um, I just wanted to clarify on the internet thing, um, my house doesn't have wired internet, but I do have Starlink. To not do well with this speaking stuff.
It's okay.
I have Starlink, I have really good internet, I'm an IT worker and we do have other options. Then a lot of infrastructure and putting in an industrial building so that people can have internet, they can just get it from Starlink and I'm sure in the future there'll be more vendors to. Um, give them more choices, but that's all I had to say, thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing. And we will then, um, start picking away at the, the. Trying to address, have, have Mr. Buchanan address the issues that the, the neighbors have, have brought up, if you come on up. And gentlemen, look, why don't you ask your questions first and I?
Will I get a chance to, to comment?
Sure.
Things that were said, because I think one of the things that keeps being very, very much taken out of context is. I- i- unless, unless I have missed something, I don't think this is a rezoning of anything and it's certainly not making it industrial, it's not making it commercial, it's still an A-two zoning. And the, the purpose of what we're trying to do falls well within the scope of an A-two zoning. So I think that's just something, I, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, that it's not, that, you know, I, that whatever the narrative is being spun about. Industrial, that's, and, and BARK is the furthest thing there is from industrial, we're a co-op, co-op's been around since the thirties. They were formed to serve farms and ranches and that's what we do, that's, we do it all over the country, not BARK. BARK does it in four counties of Virginia, but there's, there's nine hundred other electric co-ops just like us around the country that serve. Almost eighty percent of the landmass of the United States. So when you try to take and put a, put a. Stamp on, on a, on a co-op being, being a, 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 a corporation, I, I kind of take offense to it, so. But that, that's the one thing I would like to say.
Uh, Mr. Sladen, do you want to speak to the, the zoning process?
Sure.
Go ahead, and re- and confirm or that.
Yeah, I can do it after Mr. Buchanan, if you want to do it.
Well, I was just, I was asking you to clarify right now, the zoning, that we are not changing zoning.
No, I, I can confirm that, this, excuse me, I can confirm that, this, this is not a rezoning application, this is a used by special exception. Um, yeah, the, the comprehensive plan, uh, provides a vision for future of the community along with the steps needed, uh, to make that vision a reality. And so then you do go to the comprehensive plan, a couple, uh, excerpts from the comprehensive plan. Um, this is in a, uh, rural village area surrounded by a, uh, rural planning area. Uh, as far as a rural planning area goes, the comprehensive plan states it is not the intent to prohibit commercial development in the rural planning area. However, proposed zoning regulations and applications that require legislative action, which obviously we're, we're very much in one of those for now. For commercial land uses in the rural planning area are to be reviewed for the. for commercial land uses in the rural planning area are to be reviewed for the capability with surrounding land uses. It is the intent of this district that commercial developments are able to absorb and/or buffer the proposed uses in a manner that does not differ from the surrounding rural planning areas. As far as the rural village area, just a, a brief quote there, rural village areas are, are intended to absorb residential and small-scale commercial land uses which may not directly relate to active agricultural or forestal activities. And so then going back to the, you know, provides a vision for the future of the community along with steps that are needed to make that vision a reality. That's when you get into the burden hand now, the current zoning ordinance. Obviously, that, that is the enforcement mechanism where, where we, where I can make the determination if this falls under a permitted use or a use by special exception. So, we are currently going through a use by special exception. In the agricultural zoning districts, we, we have a, back up a little bit. Special exceptions have been deemed to be special exceptions by the board supervisors because they have a potential higher impact to the current surrounding community. And so we have things like commercial sawmills, special events, wood yards, non-commercial landing strips, lodges and resorts, shooting ranges, those type of things are all part of a special exception process. That gets back to zoning laws determine which types of commercial uses are permitted in an area to ensure commercial uses are compatible with the other land uses in the area. So, again, the board supervisors has determined this to be a use by special exception. And as far as the immediate area around here, we, we obviously have a, a club, excuse me, a lodge resort about 1,500 feet away, as long as a wedding event venue. We have an airstrip, a non-commercial airstrip about 2,000 feet away. The mulch yard is about 1,000 feet away. The collection center's next door. And then, of course, the wood yard is the, the most recently approved, you know, commercial endeavor. That's not true, but is a recent approval of commercial endeavor about 8,000 feet away. So, that, that, that's the difference, in my opinion. That's going to be the difference between the comprehensive plan and what zoning provides for.
Thank you. Sorry.
Well, no, that, the, the, I want to address a few things. One of the, the things that came up a few times was the, was the amount of traffic in this, in coming off Fredericksburg Road, which is what we proposed at the same location as the entrance of the collection site. And the, and in the proposal, I think you'll see it was to widen that quite a bit to allow for the trucks to get in and out. There's not going to be more trucks coming and going than there already are today. They're just going to come in from Fredericksburg Road instead of, instead of the, where the temporary access point is today. So, I don't think that's, I don't think that's an issue at all when it comes to, to the traffic. It's, if, if anything, it takes some of the traffic off of the, off of that side road on the backside. As far as the, the, one, another comment was, you know, the corporation came here. We, we didn't come here. BARK, BARK was born here. It's, it's, BARK was born in Rockbridge, in, in Bath and Rockbridge Counties in 1938. That's when it, that's when it started, and it started by the residents of these counties that we serve. It was, it was not, you know, wasn't a, it wasn't a GE or a, or a Ford or, or any of that. It, it was, it was started by farmers to serve farmers. It's, it's about as agriculture as you can get. And as a matter of fact, we fall under the, all, all of our lending, everything that we do falls under USDA. So, it's, and I think it's just important to, it's, it's, it's a great story of rural electrification. That's, that's how it started, and BARK is, is one of the, one of the very early co-ops that started in this country to do that, to do just that. And I would question, how? How would some of these farms, I mean, we heard about six generations of farmers. Well, six generations ago, they didn't have electricity, but, but they do now. And I wonder would they still live there if they didn't have electricity today? And so, I think to, to those points, my points are that our employees live here and work here, and they serve their, their friends and neighbors, which are, which are also members of the co-op. And I, I just think it's, it's, we want to be good neighbors. That's, we have no reason not to be. I think we're showing that with a lot of vegetation screening, and, and we can, we can do some things, replace some things that were taken out, and, and put in new, new trees and, and new greenery, and, and make it a very attractive part of the community. And, and I would just go on to say that there's a, there's a lot of roads, and, and I can, I can tell you if, i, if you're, if you're, if you're in Cars Creek, and, and it's, it has a special place, and it does. It's, it's, it's a really, really, really unique community. It's but almost everywhere we serve is. Almost every place we serve is just like that. And, and whether you're in Bath County, whether you're in Highland County, I mean, I think Highland County is the least populated county in the whole state, if I'm not mistaken. So, so I, I would like to just make sure that we're, we're hearing this terrible corporate, you know, this corporate lions coming in and killing all the lambs. That's, that's not who we are, and that's not what we are. So, to that, as far as the, the, I think, you know, another, another comment, drones and Google Maps and all that. Our guys still, 60%, roughly 60% of our rideaway is not reachable by a bucket truck. They spend a lot of time walking right away, up through mud, up through snow, up through ice, up through trees that have fallen down. And, and they, they, they work really, really hard to ensure that this service is back, is put back online. The last thing they need to do is drive across the mountain to a lay-down yard in Millboro to get back over here and fix something. That's all I, that's all I had to respond to.
Well, can we go through a few of these questions?
Absolutely.
Um, let's talk about the floodplain. That was brought up multiple times. Let's address those issues there. Chris, would you like to start, or?
Sure. You know, as reported, they, they did do, they being VARC, did the Loma prior to the construction of the solar facility. Again, after conversations with the surveyor that performed that Loma and the boundary line adjustments, my understanding that the Loma, which is a letter of math amendment to remove a portion of the floodplain, and this was obviously based on elevation, after getting the base flood elevation from FEMA directly, took a large portion of the solar facility out of the floodplain. Again, it's my understanding that that did not pertain, that, that legal process of removing a portion of the floodplain did not remove or did not have any effect, if you will, on the property that was not owned by BARK at that time. And that would be the 7.25 acres that is essentially under consideration this evening. With that being said, there are parts of Rockbridge County, along, parts of, along the Maury River, South, South River, Summer and Irish Creek, that type of thing that are Zone AE hatched, and that's considered the floodway. That, that is a non-buildable zone. You can do, you can't build a house, period. You can do recreational structures by special exception, and you can do agricultural structures by special exception. And then you get into what this is considered as a Zone A in the, in the FEMA floodplain. It is obviously part of the 100-year floodplain, but it is a buildable zone in terms of dwellings. They have to get an elevation certificate, and the finished floor has to be one foot above the 100-year floodplain. As far as my understanding of how it pertains to commercial development or, or accessory buildings, if you will, or commercial development in this case, you are required to elevate all of your meter bases one foot above the 100-year floodplain. And then you're also required, and this is per building department, United States Building Code, you're required to do engineer flood vents to allow the water to pass through. And that's a direct ratio of the size of the wall that, that, that is, you know, in the flow, and that square footage of the wall, and how many engineered flood vents that you have to do.
So, that would play into the, the actual design of this building?
It would, it would have a, it wouldn't influence, in my understanding, it wouldn't influence the size of the building, but it would influence or require, I should say, those engineered flood vents and the size of those engineered flood vents.
Given those flood vents, would the equipment be better in the building or out of the building in terms of staying in play?
Um, I, I think, you, you know, that's, I would say in the building. You know, as far as the, the ability for a roll of wire to, to float downstream, whether it was in a building or outside the building, I would say it's a better chance to remain on the property if it was in a building versus outdoors, put it that way.
Can you address the elevation, Mr. Buchanan? We heard quite a bit about the, the building's elevation. Is that, is that given? Is it 30 feet, right? Was it listed as 30?
29 to the, to the top of the cupola, is I believe is what it was, and 26 to the peak of the roof. But, but that's basing it on 150 by 100-foot building. So, if that building is, is smaller, the, the peak comes down. I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter of just clearances in the, in the trussing system. So, we, when we, when we did the, the plan, we laid it out with the largest, the largest potential building we could envision. And that's what puts, puts the peak at the 29 or the, when we had the, the cupolas to make it look a little bit more, again, like, I guess, I guess like the Horse Center, where, where it's got a little bit of an ag look.
Is it 29 feet at the horse center? I think it's a bit taller than that, but I don't know.
Well, it's, it's a lot bigger building than that, too. So.
We don't have any limitations on agricultural buildings, any barns or poultry houses? And I mean, 29 feet is in an agricultural zone, not uncommon, is it?
Uh, we do not have, well, accessory structures are, are required to be below the primary structure. But of course, primary structures, it's, it's, don't know what the average two, two-story house is, let's put it that way. But as far as the size goes, no. I mean, obviously, a poultry facility is, is a much larger building. With that being said, we don't, we do prohibit livestock confinement facilities in a 100-year floodplain.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions?
I had a few. You answered one of them. No, probably no more vehicles in the future than what's already coming in there, right? You're already using it as a later.
Right.
Uh, what about equipment? Any additional or new equipment there versus what's already there in New York?
I mean, I would say that when you look at how equipment has, has advanced over the years, I mean, from, from back in the, the 30s of no equipment, I guess probably, you know, to today with, with bigger derricks that, that are, are pretty tall and big booms on them. I, I don't think, I would never say that it, that the equipment won't continue to get bigger. It probably will because it's, it's, you know.
But you already have boom drops, all right?
We already all have all those today, yes.
All right. You know, the height of the building, and I think, I know this is a little bit different, but I know Mr. Sladen touched on it, you know, the height of a secondary building versus height of primary. I mean, on this particular property, you could almost consider school as primary, and it sits up on a hill. So, it's still will be higher than a 30-foot roof of this particular building you're talking about. And materials, one of the things I thought was, it was good discussion on, on the flooding aspect, but I think we had the same type of discussion on the logging. I mean, you know, if it's coming for rain and it's going to flood, are you going to let your material sit there and flood down the river, or you will move?
I would hope we would move.
Just one question. And you touched on it earlier. When, when the initial fiber projects came in, a lot of money didn't come in that we were all anticipating. So, that slowed the progress. And now that we've got these grants, and we've put a lot of money out, how much longer before we get to those 80% of, some percent of the houses that don't have the high-speed connection? Are we talking years? Should we talk a couple of years? Approximately?
I would say that, that each one of these grants is a, is a four-year build-out requirement. So, that, that's, it's, it's a minimum of four. But the, the problem is, is that they're still, that, that's only getting about half of those. Then they're, they still got the other half that are even, even more expensive and harder to reach. And, and to the person's point, you made the comment on the Starlink and stuff. It, it is. I mean, it, it's, it's amazing what that technology's done. Satellite technologies has done a lot of really, really amazing things with the low earth orbit stuff. And, and, and it may, it very well may reach it. I know that's how I have, that's how I'm served at my houses with a, with Starlink and a, and a satellite internet. And it, and it works, it works fine for me. I, I don't have one tree in my yard, so it works fine for me. But at the exact same time, my son at his place, it's trees everywhere. He can't, can't make it work there. It just, it's not, it's not, it's not an option without cutting down a lot of trees. So.
We're going to be running fiber for the considerable?
Probably in the mountainous terrain with the, with the, with the, the amount of force that we have, I would say your, your opportunities to have unlimited, you know, sightline to the sky where those satellites are, it's, it's just, it's, it gets pretty complicated in some areas. Yeah.
And, and now you, you can run five or two homes in the area that aren't serviced by BARK Electric but are serviced by Dominion?
Correct. Yeah, and, and we do do that.
Worked all that out.
Yep. Yep. And we do, we do that today.
So, you, you asked about the fiber connections. Right now, the, there's about 280 in the VODI Virginia Telecommunications Initiative grant. That's the one Bill and I are working on at the 1:00 AM, trying to get that, the, the deadline met. The other one is the Community Connect Grant that he mentioned. That's a, that's a federal USDA. There's 333 locations in that one. And then there are, there are others that we're talking about that we would try to get to with the Broadband Equity Act. That's the federal, next round of federal funding coming through the state. It's called BEAD.
All questions? Asked and answered? Any, any other questions, gentlemen? Then I will entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess I got a question for Chris. Is there a way we can continue as is and give BARK a chance to tighten up their plan and, and get a storm water management information? Because when we get some of these other things, they might not be able to build as big a building as they want to. We, we can get more specific details. We'll know about, you know, what, what's going to happen with the runoff water, whether they're going to have to build a retention pond. Where would that go? How that's going to fit? So that we have some very specific information to make our, our decision on without stopping what they're currently doing.
Uh, yes. I mean, potentially, I should say. So, as discussed with some individual board members at a- as discussed with some individual board members, uh, and, and some follow-up conversation with staff, individual board members and citizens, uh, I have prepared a, uh, possible revisions to the April ninth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission recommendation. So at this time, I'd like to pass this out to the board, and then also I could just start passing those around. I think I have twenty-five copies there, uh, for the public. So some of the, again, some of the comments that, that staff has heard from individual citizens, uh, citizens in the area and elsewhere, uh, individual conversations with the Board of Supervisors essentially, uh, pertain to, and, and some of the comments we heard this evening, I should say, essentially pertain to the, the, uh, buildings associated with the use. Uh, we, we have not, through the process, we have not heard, uh, as much, uh, if, as much, I'll say, with, uh, noise associated with the current activities. With that being said, again, uh, based on these comments, we have developed, I'm gonna share my screen so I can, working in real time. One thing, these are, again, possible revisions to the April ninth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission recommendation. Uh, number one, substantial compliance with the concept plan prepared by B A R C Electrical Cooperative dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty, actually be twenty fifteen, with twelve revisions, with the last date of revision being March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. And then in red is, is what we've added, uh, as possible revisions, excluding the.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you get ready for your calendar there?
Yeah, it's funny because it's not on my screen. It's odd because I don't see it on my screens. Let me get, in fact, I think Mr. Suter might have to do it. Because my, my mouse won't work. That, that's on the screen.
Well, I don't believe I'm gonna be able to control here. There we go. Just need somebody smart to tell me what to do.
Uh, again, number one, could be modified, uh, substantial appliance with a concept plan prepared by Bark, uh, prepared by Bark Electric Cooperative dated April eighteenth, twenty fifteen, with twelve revisions, with the last revision date of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Uh, then in red is what's added, excluding the proposed warehouse shop light maintenance and the open building with covered lean-to roof. Uh, additionally, the area shown as space to be reclaimed, remove RM, remove existing gravel and plant grass to match remaining grassy area shall be able to remain. Uh, conversations, uh, with, with others, uh, proposed to, uh, rather than ninety days of a, a fully executed decommission agreement by the project owner and the county, uh, provide for one year for that to happen. Uh, this is, this is verbatim of what was included in the package. Um, in conversations, uh, with Bark, essentially, uh, we identified that there might be, uh, some uh, desire to, to keep the fencing there. So I've added fencing to two E. Uh, moving down the line, everything's verbatim until you get to number seven, and that just strikes references associated with the three-sided building and the warehouse shop light maintenance shall be on motion sensors. Uh, completely eliminate number eleven because we've eliminated that from, from the plan. Uh, and then, uh, as far as twelve goes, we've eliminated the, the, uh, the contingent upon approvals that pertain to the building itself. And then lastly, well, excuse me, number fourteen, we, uh, removed the vehicle maintenance a- at the storage yard. Uh, that could actually remain, but usually that would have been, would, would have been associated with, with the, uh, with the warehouse slash shop for light maintenance. And then finally, uh, as reported many times before, the Code of Virginia, in my opinion, that the Code of, Code of Virginia was clarified last year by the General Assembly that, that provides for a period of validity associated with special exceptions. Um, and so the period of validity for the use of the lay-down yard shall be for X number of years. That's something that y'all could consider. And, and I think this, to be clear, you know, in conversations with, with Bark, I think that the intent would obviously be, as they stated in twenty twenty-three, I should say, uh, that the, the intent would certainly not to be just to remove these warehouses altogether for the current plan or future plans, but allow additional time, uh, for Bark to get with, uh, continue the discussion with the community, with the nearby neighbors, uh, to develop a plan that, that's, that better answer some of the questions as it pertains to the, uh, size of the building, uh, the stormer management associated with it, that, those type of attributes of the plan.
Okay, so this would allow them to continue, and in the meantime, tighten up the plan, get us more, more, I wanna say, more accurate information, precise information of exactly what they wanna put on the site without disrupting their progress with getting this fiber out of the count.
Uh, in my opinion, it would. I would, I would relay, I, I would also like, uh, a representative for Bark to, to address that question as well. Because it, I, I think that would be better addressed by Bark.
Yeah, I mean, I just think there's a lot of questions that both people have, and, and in my opinion, just meeting with them that, that they wanna do the right thing, and I think the people in the community want the right thing done, but they, they, they don't wanna smoke and mirrors and, or told something's gonna happen if, if we can't tell them exactly what's supposed to happen.
Mr. Buchanan, would you like to address?
Yeah, I think, I think as far as the, just being able to use the late, continue to use a lay-down yard, that's the, that's the main object, would be the main objective for us. So the, the, the one, the one concern I have, and I brought it up before, is, and I guess it's kind of, the question came up the other day, and I thought, I don't, I don't know how it works, but when we talk about the solar, the decommissioning plan, whatever it is, and then there's a bond. Does Bark hold the bond on itself? I mean, we're the, we're the landowner. We own, we own the space. Is it, do we put a bond out for ourselves? Or I, I, I don't know how that works. I would, I understand, and that was to the comment of, of, in, in the earlier uh, conversation with, with US, uh, or, yeah, US Solar. I can totally understand the bonding process and, and the, the reclamation plan or whatever they call, call the decommissioning plan on a commercial-scale solar. But again, this is very much like a residential solar. We own the land, we own the solar project. So do we put the bond? Do we put the bond up to ourselves, or does it? I don't know how that works. So that's, it's.
I'm gonna ask for a little assistance from, uh, Mr. Higgins. Let me see up there, somebody online. Um, hold on.
Yes, sir. We got you.
Okay, did you lose this for a minute?
Yes, sir. We're all good.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Than we thought.
All right, we're back at it.
Uh, it's, it looks like we're still, we're still on.
Okay.
We will move forward. So you were saying?
I, yeah, I'm not sure where we lost. I wasn't sure where I was when we lost.
Talking about the bonding and that you weren't sure that.
The bonding, and, and I just, I just, I'm having a hard time understanding. I understand a hundred percent how it applies to, to, you know, a, a commercial solar developer coming in and, and, and leasing the ground. That's what I was mentioning in that, that, the, the last thing, or when I was quoted on that. What I don't, what I, I guess what I fail to understand is how a decommissioning plan and a, and a bond makes sense on, on the ground that, that we own. I mean, so our members, the members on the solar, the members on the ground. I don't know. So my question was, does the bond go, who does the bond get paid to?
Chris, were you answering that question?
Uh, Rockbridge County, County of Rockbridge.
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole purpose of the bonds, even in the commercial setting, is not for the landowner. It's to protect the county because the county would bear the ultimate responsibility. The example in this would be if Bark goes bankrupt, and then who, who pays for the decommissioning? So that, that's why, and the, um, and the reason why Bark did not have this when it started is because the law for this, I think, passed in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen is when it came in place. So any new, so if Bark were to put in this, even, even a community solar program, they would be required to file the decommission, that required to issue decommission plan and, and, and put up a bond or, or some other financial guarantee besides bonds that are listed in the statute. But, uh, but yeah, the beneficiary would be the county.
Okay.
But since it's art was there before that, are they not grandfathered then?
Uh, it was, well, no, it's, it's not an issue of being grandfathered. I mean, it's an issue of, of when the, when the, when they come up for a change into their special exception status. And the, the actual special exception was actually granted was for the solar field and for the school, not necessarily for the lay-down yards. Those were just put down time by time again. And so this is good, putting it to more of a permanent position, and therefore we decided it'd be best to bring the whole, the whole, uh, uh, the solar fields and everything in, into compliance with what the current state of law is. It, it, we're not expecting Bark, uh, Bark to go bankrupt, but it does provide that protection to the citizens of the county, if that were the case. It, well, it does have some cost, should be somewhat minimal cost, though. It shouldn't be that expensive of a bond.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Slade, with the proposed changes that you have, I we're not gonna ask the, or, or, explain the process for BRC. Once they get the buildings fine-tuned, the size, the shape, the color, uh, what, what the entrance is gonna be, what's, uh, you know, ingress, egress, all that. They won't have to go back through the Planning Commission again, will they, or will it?
Yeah, they will. Yes, sir. The, the same processes we're going through currently to amend the twenty sixteen application. So yes, sir. And I would like to make a note, you, you, you did bring up a good point, that, that, that obviously the access, uh, point entrance, uh, and exit onto Frexburg Road is still shown on that plan. So I think it would behoove the process if, if it is going in the, if the, the Board of Supervisors' will is to prove it with some, some conditions, it may be beneficial for both the county and Bark to have a, uh, a, a condition associated with, uh, the new access point entrance and exit to Frexburg Road shall be constructed and in operation within X years of date of approval or months, uh, approval of special exception permit. That, that would, uh, a- essentially provide everyone the same song sheet.
Well, you just lost, mate.
Uh, Mr. McDaniel brought up a, uh, a, a, just a point on the entrance and exit and the design. I think, you know, they, they have worked with VDOT. That's one thing I, I will say, as far as the comments of the points, uh, the, the existing points of conflict and the proposed points of conflict, uh, they will have to get an entrance permit, uh, approved by VDOT.
Right.
And so therefore, the, the, it would, it, it could behoove the process to have a revised condition, or excuse me, a new condition talking about the, the new access point entrance and exits of Frexburg Road shall be constructed and in operation within X months, years of the date of a removal of the special exception. So that would give, that would give Bark the idea of when this new access point would have to come, come through because that is still currently part of the, uh, special exception plan, if you will.
Right, but if, 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 when they get to the, the devil's in the details of what they, when we finally get the details, that entrance might not work. So shouldn't we wait till they come back?
Can you explain the preliminary, uh, conversations you've had with VDOT?
Chris, you, you're more aware of what, what happened with that. I'm not, I wasn't involved with the conversations.
Essentially, we reached out to the, the VDOT, uh, area engineer, and they actually indicated that that's a, a preferred ingress and egress location for where we're presently using the lay-down yard at that facility. And obviously, we'd abandoned the one on Big Spring Drive, and then just primarily use that one by expansion. So, so vehicles can come in and out at that location and not introduce another, another ingress and egress.
Okay, i- is that, so will that, will using the one mean the other one has to be closed?
Uh, per the plan, yes. The, the plan shows that being closed. And that is, and that's why I'm saying that is very much part of the plan still, even with the revision, uh, the potential revision, I should say, to number one, that, that ingress and egress to Big Spring Road is, is shown as removed. Uh, the ingress and egress to Frexburg Road, the new ingress and egress, I should say, proposed ingress and egress to Frexburg Road is shown on the plans. So that's where I think it could behoove the process to have a timeframe associated with the, the construction and in operation within X timeframe, whether it be months, years, whatever uh, is the will.
Is there a problem with that? How are you feeling about that?
I think, I think it's gonna be, I think we'll be able to get the, get that widened and, and approved by the VDOT. I don't think there's gonna be any problem with that, but it, but I, I mean, like everything with them, it takes time. I don't, I can't tell you how much time.
We, we heard that this, this evening, yeah.
And, and rightfully so. The, the reason I'm cognitive of this, rightfully so, you know, there've been several comments made by, uh, at the Planning Commission, maybe even here of, uh, Bark adhering to the plan, the community field was shown on the plan, the solar was shown on the plan, and here we are, uh, you know, essentially nine years later, and those plans have not come to fruition. Well, a very large part of that is because we've granted, the Board of Supervisors have granted temporary permits for the last eight years, you know, so, so I'm essentially more cognitive of that than, than we have been in the past. I'll, I'll leave it at that. As far as the implementation dates of the project itself, and, and what is anticipated, uh, what's expected, what is anticipated.
So are you, are we, would we be making this change?
If, if, if it's a desire of the, the board, obviously, the board has, you know, uh, the, the, the board has the ability to take the Planning Commission's recommendation, as is, the board has the ability to modify, uh, the, the, the draft conditions, and of course, the Board of Supervisors has the ability to deny the permit itself. So essentially, I would just say the, 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 at the will of the board.
You, you have made that recommendation.
I think, I think it would, I do think it would be beneficial. That way, everyone knows exactly, has a better idea. I think, I think it would, I do think it would be beneficial, that way everyone knows exactly, has a better idea of when and what will happen, and, and the, the implementation dates.
Question?
If I understood what was said here tonight, and it's correct, do we not, as a board, have to adhere to our mission statement and to our comprehensive plan?
Well, I guess that, I mean, for me, that is, the comprehensive plan is very much an interpretation that each of us does.
Um, so, we've written something that.
Hey, hey, stop, stop. That's, that's not appropriate.
Yes, please stop.
Sorry, I apologize.
Um, go ahead.
So we've written something that we don't have to hear to, don't have to go by, so it, it doesn't mean anything?
Can you be more specific, which, which aspect? What don't?
Well, if I can interpret it one way, Bob, would you? Oh, I'm sorry, if I can interpret it one way, the other board members can interpret it another way, then, why do we have it, what good is it? I mean.
If it'd be helpful, I can speak to the legal status of what it is. Um, the, the comprehensive plan, while, uh, just correct, some of the comments should make this not purely philosophical document, it's not. It, it is meant to help guide our decisions, however, also there's court cases which weren't cited too, which were, it's clear where it stated the comprehensive plan is not a zoning ordinance. So it doesn't have the weight and order, as a matter of fact, the zoning ordinances exist to put the comprehensive plan into action. So it does leave, and, and unfortunately, the comprehensive plan is not something we could turn to even like the Constitution of the United States and say, this is what it says. Comprehensive plan is just supposed to be a guidance document, and each of you do have to interpret yourself, and we're required by statute to say whether or not something is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan when we apply it, so, it, it, it's, it's up to you, supervisor day, as to what you believe this comprehensive plan means there, and clearly if something is, if you want to put a nuclear power plant in the middle of something that's clearly contrary to comprehensive plan, I mean, we, I don't think the courts would allow that, but it's, uh, it is to guide your legislative decision-making process, and as legislatures in this situation, you have to just base your vote on what would, uh, a, be a non-arbitrary, capricious decision-making process and a fairly debatable is the actual standard the courts apply. So if you believe that it's applicable to consider plan, and you can state a reason why the comprehensive plan does work or does not apply in this situation, um, then that would be a fairly debatable standard, and that would meet your standards you have to meet, but it is something that is a guidance document for you to determine how to imply it, but the actual ones we have to interpret directly are most important, are the ordinances themselves. The ordinance itself is the law that binds our decision-making process.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you, good, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion, because, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the revisions uh, made with a validity period of two years. And if Bark wants to proceed with these major constructions, they need to come back showing, uh, everything we asked for tonight, and be very specific in the details.
Would that include the recommendation by Mr. Sladen?
Uh, it includes the changes he's made in the document.
So that, to be clear, that was a no, okay.
I mean, I think VDOT is a, is a very capable group, and, and they can work on those plans too. But I'm not a, that's what they get paid for, so if they can work on approved engines, I'm okay with that.
Absolutely, the, the, the approval would be contingent upon VDOT, the, the purpose of the, uh, the draft, uh, revision was to provide a, uh, a, a, not a date by any means, but the number of months or years, uh, that it would be essentially implemented.
I've made my motion.
Understood.
So your motion does not include the VDOT piece?
The VDOT piece is already in. VDOT has to approve. Isn't that correct?
Yes, number, uh, number, draft condition number thirteen says approval contingent upon VDOT, uh, excuse me, Virginia Department of Transportation, erosion and sediment control, stormwater management, approvals and all applicable in state federal, uh, regulations. The draft one would piggyback off that, and it's not, I agree with everything that's been said about VDOT, uh, but it would just state the new access point entrance and exit to Franksburg Road shall be constructed and in operation within X years of a date of approval of special exceptions permit. So the, the purpose of that would solely be to give, uh, the date of implementation of that particular plan, and, and have some, uh, guidance that the citizens could be aware of, and, and of course, Mark, as a business owner, being aware of, of when it's anticipated, or when it would be required for that to be, uh, implemented.
And, and what would be a reasonable recommendation by, by you?
Uh, if the, if the date of the, did we say two years for the period of validity for the lay down yard?
Yep.
Um, uh, we would need to, uh, I would say within, within that timeframe, I would assume.
Same timeframe.
That would be fine.
I would imagine e- e- ingress and egress from Franksburg Road would be easier for you anyway, wouldn't it?
I, I think it's, yeah, I think it'd be easier.
All right, I'll second Mr. Lyons' vote.
Any discussion, man? We.
Yeah, I'll be happy to discuss, I mean, I think, you know, I understand communities' response and, and questions and everything. Is, and some people say, well, they can move somewhere else, well, Bark's already there, it's not like they're buying the property to move there, they're already there, they're already using it as a lay down yard, they're improving the property. The, the buildings that they're wanting to construct at some point in the future appear to be, you know, barn-like, I mean, they're not the concrete warehouse that, that you're putting up, or Walmart or something like that, I mean, appears to be a structure that you would find on a farm. Um, the ingress and egress of Franksburg Road is better than off of Big Spring Drive. Uh, you're right there at Interstate, you're right there at a major, uh, state highway Route sixty, I mean, me, that corner location makes perfect sense for this particular thing, especially with the fact that they're serving our citizens, they're providing electricity, there, there, a timely response is needed in crisis situations, and they're there to provide that, so it makes sense to me.
My reading as for discussion was on the VDOT. If VDOT hasn't approved it, then they can't be using it, right?
Exactly, yeah.
That's, yeah, that's, that's where I wanted to go.
Must be approved by VDOT, and we aren't approving any buildings tonight, we're, we're giving them the opportunity to tighten things up, but, uh, without disrupting the installation of fiber across the county.
May I ask a question? Or is it?
It's not really done, so. Uh, I, I think what I was gonna say is I, I certainly support Bark, and I support, I, I'm sad that the neighbors don't see Bark, uh, Bark is our neighbor, it's been our neighbor. Um, I'm sure there's been some, some times where things haven't gone well. I, I think this plan can, uh, can this building, do I think this building could fall within the comprehen, something that could be consistent with the community, I think it can. Do I think it could be something not consistent with the community? Yes, I think it can, so I don't, I'm, I don't object for this time to make sure so that the community feels um, heard, and some of the things can be sorted out, but it is clear from this board, at, at least, um, and I, I'm gonna go on board, uh, on, on the record, saying I support Bark, I support this project in this location as long as the concerns of the neighbors can be met, and I think this timeframe can, can do that. So. Anything else? Are we, are we, we've got the motion, got a motion in a second.
I call for the question.
Mm-hmm. It does, so, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr., um, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all. Now, we have, before we adjourn.
All right, yes.
Still got two more things to do.
Yeah.
Let's get on with it, it's not far. No, no, gavel, let's, let's get on board with it.
I'm waiting for these people to leave.
Get the gavel, tell them we got business going up.
Mr. McDaniel, let me run my bill.
I was joking with you. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to tell you what to do.
Oh, my goodness. We'll get out of here. Folks, we need to continue our meeting.
Where are we?
Where are we? County of Rockbridge, we are now, Mr. Sladen, on item fourteen.
Oh, yes.
Why don't we, can we close the door?
It is not Mr. Dryden. Uh, I apologize.
No problem, take a sec.
Yep.
All right, the, the, the fourth public hearing associated with planning and zoning, uh, is the, uh, potential zoning tax amendment to modify section six oh five, the general business zoning district, uh, and six oh five point oh three, special exceptions of the regulations provide the use of a private school as a use by special exception in the B one zoning district. Uh, at its November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, twenty twenty-four, excuse me, planning commission meeting, the commission discussed the potential zoning tax amendment to provide for private schools as a use by special exception in the general business zoning district under current ordinances. Uh, section six oh five point zero two thirty-three of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations provides for business and vocational schools as a permitted use in the B one zoning district. However, there are currently no provisions for private schools, uh, private schools in the B one zoning district. Uh, the planning commission instructed staff to schedule a public hearing on this meeting, uh, excuse me, instructed, uh, on the matter, at its March twelfth, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting, the planning commission held its public hearing on the proposed zoning tax amendments. There were no public, uh, comments, the planning commission has recommended approval of the zoning tax amendment, so, uh, in your package, uh, you have an ordinance prepared, uh, that is a very fairly simple ordinance, if you will, as far as the, the text goes, it just lists private schools as a use by special exception in the general business zoning district.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing.
Uh, yes, uh, no one has signed up.
All right, anyone online?
Uh, nobody with a hand raised.
And anyone in the audience? So a closed public hearing, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So I move, I have to present it.
I'm sorry. All right, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Ordinance to amend the Rockbridge County Code, chapter twenty-seven taxation to amend article, what is that for? Um, Mr. Dryden?
Our, uh, section twenty-five ninety-six of our county code requires that, uh, residents of Rockbridge County to purchase a, a licensed decal, car decal for their car, if they're, meet certain conditions. Um, and that, one of the conditions is that they, if it's, has to be registered with the DMV. Uh, prior to changes in the law last year, a farm, certain farming vehicles were not required to be registered with the DMV, however, last year, the state legislature changed that law, requiring, requiring that farm use vehicles be registered with the DMV. And we now have this category where they have to be registered, and we weren't aware that they had to also then, what required them to purchase the decals. The cost of person decals is, is twenty-five dollars. Uh, what we've done is we've put, provided some amendment to this, the language, uh, of the, of our county code, which would make it clear that all vehicles would have to, uh, acquire, uh, decals, and then we exempt, uh, farm use vehicles from the twenty-five dollar, uh, decal purchase tax. And the purpose behind this is the same as with the farm use, uh, uh, property tax issue we faced last year, it's just to keep things the status quo, that, so it's not any different than it was before the law was changed, these. The, but, there is one benefit, though, to farm use vehicles, and a benefit to the county, is we are, require them to get these decals, which means if they do have to bring trash to any of our drop-off points, we can clearly identify the residents of the county, and that will help us with people who still are using our drop-off points from other areas to identify, so it, it adds a protection to, to the, to the farmers who decide to get this.
All right, um, I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, we have Steve Hart.
I just read what was on the thing, and I listened to what you said, and we'll make sure I understand this. You gotta get a decal, but you don't have to pay for the decal.
Yes.
That's right, that's actually a really good idea.
Anybody else? Nobody online, correct?
No hands raised.
All right, then we will close the public hearing.
Move to approve, so I can.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have a bit of unfinished business, um, on our budget.
Um, I guess so, can't remember what we got.
I, I think you gave an explanation, I had some questions, there were.
Mr. Lewis had some thoughts?
Yes.
I did, I do. Yeah, amazingly still able to do that. Of course, I would prefer no tax agrees. I do, uh, support contributions to capital, and I would counter that we already had that in place, as I've done for seven years, but, um, I'm glad that we're working towards that, I, 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 I think that, as we've said every year, what we advertise could always be less after the public hearing, when we'll make a final decision, if that's, just wanna make sure that's correct.
Uh, yes, sir, you can, if the board advertises a tax, you can't go higher, uh, but you can go lower or eliminate it altogether.
So again, while I support a, a definitive contribution to, to capital, was there any discussion on that percentage amount, did, 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 did you all, finance committee have strong feelings on that percentage, or could that be, uh, adjusted a little bit down, since we're already defining, uh, pennies?
What, what, uh, I don't, I don't want to speak on your behalf, but.
The fifty percent of whatever surplus were also dedicated.
Yes.
So I, I was just asking if, if you guys had, had, had discussion about that, because I don't wanna.
Well, we, we did, but we, we think the only way you're gonna build up, uh, a fund it, it doesn't make money to go into it.
Right, so we're, we're designating sort of almost two pots, I guess is what I'm getting at, we're, we're doing awful lot of designate and I don't wanna see. Us restrict ourselves farther than we have.
Right, but you have to, on the average year. We've been taking three pennies out of reserve just to pay for school buses and.
Yes.
Law enforcement vehicles, so that's how we came up with the three pennies, so, because that's really an operational thing, that's a capital expense. But we realize that there might be years you don't, but it's always better if we can restrict some of those funds so that. For some of these capital things down the road, we can pay cash and not have to go out.
Which I agree with that strategy, we've been doing that well, that's, so I'm not, I don't want the, the tax increase, but I'm willing to understand that. We, 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 we do that and define it for that purpose, but then the additional, uh, control on. Uh, any additional funds that might exist was, was all I was looking for some maybe. You know, twenty-five percent or something, you know, I'm, I'm not against the concept completely, uh, I wasn't in all the discussions. So I just wanted to explore that briefly.
Fifty for capital and then fifty goes in the reserves, knowing that. When you don't have enough in capital, you're gonna take from reserves anyway.
So that's why I would prefer just not to have that restriction at all, because it just, it just, it just restricts more the decisions we could make. Or might need to make. But I appreciate the finance committee's hard work and bringing us a, you know, basically a balanced budget.
Well, the, you know, the, the school buses, police cars make up, uh, probably somewhere around nine hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, it's an ongoing every year expense, it's an operational expense, however it is capital. So it's a combination of the two, right? So that, that's why, and we're gonna have to buy police cars every year, we're gonna have to buy buses every year and, and. Like Mister Lyons said, been taking it out of reserves, which I've been fine with, because it helped our citizens by not having to have any type of tax increase. Uh, but it comes a point to where you have to outstart allocating some funds to that. That's what this is. I also agree with your point in that, you know, maybe the, the percentage is up for discussion, we, we can. You know, discuss that between now and when we finally take a vote.
Or we can be flexible and just discuss at the end of fiscal year when we say we got a surplus of X number of dollars.
Yeah, we could make an assignation that, that way, right?
But that'll make you feel better.
It would, because.
I could live with that.
Because that was gonna be my next comment, is the, the way I view the budget season, it's a new year every year, you know, we do our best. Um, as Miss Ayers pointed out in discussions with Ashen to estimate revenues and, and that sort of thing. But we don't know what, what those are gonna be, they, they could be much better than expected, so.
Especially last week or so, you never know what's gonna happen.
Did something happen this week? And let me, can I ask, jump in about the revenues and then I'll, and then maybe this'll spark more conversation? I feel that there were a few years ago that we were overly conservative in estimating the revenues and. That yielded quite a bit to our reserves, so it made sense when we took money out of those reserves to keep our taxes from going up. It did because we had been too conservative. Over the last couple of years, we've chipped away at that and I'm feeling not so optimistic that, that. Well, I'm thinking these revenues might be overly optimistic, so the idea that we have anything to put into some kind of. Fund at the end is, uh, I just, it feels like a stretch, especially going into the economy we might be going into. Um, I am worried we were really overly optimistic, so what we said is. That all reserves, anything over, we're gonna put into a fund, what happens if there's a deficit? Now you've taken the three, you, you've identified that as capital and you're again pulling out of reserves, which we are. Dropping at a precipice, right, and I want, I feel that we just need. I, I feel that this is just overly optimistic and I would feel better if we were. Instead of three cents and then maybe dropping that a little bit, at least giving ourselves in the next couple of weeks. Advertising a rate of five cents so that we can verify, I'd like to verify these numbers, we just got this on Friday and I am feeling. That this might be overly optimistic.
Well, the, the perfect budget would end up with zero, zero excess. Zero, you know, and, and, you know, it's, uh. A lot of those numbers might be optimistic, but a lot of them are conservative. And, you know, while we're not taking. A million dollars out of reserves to pay for buses and police cars. That money, we have that kind of money in reserves and if we come up short, I don't think we're gonna come up short. By millions. And, and I think we. You know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have people pay more taxes so that we can have excess left over at the end of the year.
Well, we need, we, we absolutely should put some more money back in reserves.
We, well, I, I, I mean, I, I under, I understand the concept of, of putting money in reserves, but. You know, our, our floor that we have to maintain is rough numbers here, sixteen million, we have twenty-eight million.
And that's self imposed.
I, I mean, yeah, I mean, so we're, we're well above the floor, I, I mean.
And, and I think that was the advice that Davenport representative was giving us.
Well, he told us our, our expenditures are exceeding our revenue, Marty told us that our last meeting with Davenport.
For first, in third, since.
Since of which period you look at, I guess, but.
Mister Lewis, I think since nineteen, I'm sorry, Mister Harrison, I think the, the, the information you gave was since nineteen ninety-five. We have not had, I, is this the six, have we had six years of non, five or six years of absolute flat? Taxes except for when we equalize the tax rate, so, which is flat taxes, not. So we've had that many years, we have not had more than two years of that in over, i- in these thirty-five years. Ever, more than two years where we can maintain flat, in that time, we have just in our employees. Wages, we've, I bet we're twenty percent in those years, uh, you. I, I, I just, just, I wanna believe that if these revenues are right and they're really, you don't think they're overly optimistic, I am. Absolutely on board, we do not need to bank anymore, I'm not suggesting that we do. I just don't, I just don't want to come to the end of the year and find that we're. Have a deficit of a million or two and we have to dip more into reserves just because we didn't, we were overly optimistic, so. I just have not had the time to really look at that, but you all, you all.
I, I feel comfortable, I mean, I, I. Looked, you know, did my usual take on them, uh, as I do annually. Uh, did have a chance to speak, share some thoughts with Mister McDaniel, so I'm, I'm comfortable that my thoughts were, were. Included in what the finance committee's recommending, so I, I really don't want to, I don't, I sort of don't wanna do three, but I, 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 I hear them, so. And conceptually, I think we both agree on, on the, where we're putting the money, which is why I'm for it, but I, I. I, the, the other, the other comment I would say is I think we have put, the board has put significant energy and, and effort into economic development and I think. We're reaping some of that benefit, which is, which was the point.
We need to, I believe on this issues. Set the public hearing, correct?
Uh, yes ma'am, you had set the public hearing.
Item ten, um.
For April twenty eighth.
We all set our piece on the budget, anything else?
I could, I just want, just, I think. It's not a special levy, the three cents, uh, the board will have to make that decision. If the three cents is approved, you'd have to make that, that decision each budget year on how much to. Dedicate, the proposed budget for FY twenty-six has that three cents going. To the capital fund, but you'd have to do that every year.
And we talked, we talked about this in finance committee, I mean, it, it, it is buses, police cars, so like, it is capital, okay? But it's an operational expense because it's ongoing, it's every single year, so shouldn't it just be a line item in our operational budget to pay for that? And, and then it wouldn't necessarily matter, I mean, you're paying for a capital expense, but you're paying for it every single year.
Yes, sir, I, I, I. I would hope that, um, if the, there's two things. One is we, uh, just as part of moving to Tyler's, the time to clean up things, so we need to just create one capital fund. And so you don't, so it would no longer be bifurcated between capital purchase and capital construction. I think if with the, uh. I think, I think you're, we would do both, with a capital fund that has a source of. Funding by the board, whether a percent of the annual surplus or so many cents on the tax rate. We could actually start beginning to treat that as an actual fund, so yes, those operating, though they're annual expenses, those are built in first as far as that. Uh, the balance that you're working with, so that, that would come off the top, so I think you, you can accomplish both objectives with what you're requesting.
I mean, I think it allows future boards more flexibility, if, you know, whether it's two cent, three cent, whatever the amount is we go upon, it's, it's an operational expense. You put a line item in there that you're gonna pay for these capital expenditures by this line item, so it provides future boards more flexibility. It's not like you're saying this two or three, four cent, whatever it is, has to go to capital. Cause future boards may say, you know what, we're not gonna buy four buses, we're gonna go buy two, they may say we're, we're, you know, instead of ten police cars, we're gonna go buy five. So, I don't really wanna tie the hands of future boards, that's why I think it needs to be an operational line item. Design, it, it's just what this paying for, but it's whatever that capital amount is on a yearly basis, as you said.
Yes, I, I think, uh, what, as like for, for example, right now, uh, the board has, uh, at the recommendation of finance committee, we separated. Uh, we've budgeted, we've been drawing down for that, starting this fiscal year budget, for example. We put five, we took five years, we took the entire amount of, of the entire CIP and put that in assigned reserves called capital. If we were to move towards a more true capital fund and a true fund instead of just. A department, that fund, that, that type of money would be moved over to the capital fund. So is, so you would see like you do with the general fund and audit, you see a beginning fund balance and ending fund balance, you'd see the same thing on the capital fund. You would see a beginning fund balance and ending fund balance, so you'd be working with the capital separately. Each year, but yeah, we would build in those recurring expenses. Under the capital fund is what I would recommend, so I think it's both. You can stay, you can keep with capital but still treat it as an operating expense under the capital fund. I'd have to show you, I think, like, we can go in more weeds with finance committee on this.
Okay, that's not necessarily a condition of the advertisements, right?
That's correct, sir.
It's not specific, it, it does show. It does, it does show, is it going to the capital fund in the budget, but. The advertisement is, it does not say anything about.
The rate is the point.
All right, do, do you need to see?
You know, I just.
Okay, I don't think it needs to see.
Well, I mean, I, designating it as capital and not other things as capital, you know, I, I'm, I'm still a little unclear, we need a little work on that, but I guess since the advertisement doesn't need to say. One or the other, it's a three, uh, three cent increase, correct? I mean, that's the.
Unfortunately.
That is there.
Regardless, you need that revenue to balance the budget, so.
Exactly.
Whether you wanna call it, whatever you wanna call, we're paying for the buses and police cars, we need that, those funds to balance the budget.
So for the FY twenty-six budget, as, as it's drafted, right? We have that three cents going to the capital fund. You would have to, as a board, you wouldn't be restricting it, cause the board each year would have to. We probably should just get rid of the three cents, the board would have to make a decision each year on how much, if any, would be transferred. From the ca, uh, general fund to the capital fund as far as a percent, uh, X amount of cents. So that is advertised, at least for FY twenty-six, not advertised, well, it's not in the public notice. But the public notice references the budget, which will be online, so people can see that, at least for FY twenty-six. The proposed three cents is going to the capital fund.
Yeah, we're moving three cent over to paper, but it, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's just three cent of sixty-four cent in revenues. I mean, it's, it's not. I think we're saying the same thing, just going around, around, but I mean, it's, it's not like we're saying. Three cent has to go here, three cents is coming into our pot and then we're taking and here's what we're spending on, it's like.
Yes, sir.
You know, twenty-five cent might go, we're paying on schools or fifteen cent might go over paying on fire and rescue, I mean, you know, we don't designate all that other, we bring the revenue in and we pay for the items that we.
Right, we don't designate, and I think that is a good point, and I think when the, the public hears a three cents on capital, they think of. Uh, a future, you're, you're saving for something in the future, they don't think you're buying the school bus that you have to buy every year. That is my problem with it, it's just an expense. So. But. Are we ready for a motion? Anything else?
I like motion that we advertise a potential up to three cent tax increase on real estate.
Second.
Mister Daniel?
Yes.
Mister Lyons?
Yes.
Mister Day? Mister Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes.
My assumption is that that, that motion also includes advertising the budget as presented.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you can find a couple hundred thousand, ma, million dollars, you can cut out of there, then we'll advertise something else.
Well, we just reduce it.
Yeah.
Will we? Three cents to the, the minus two cent.
All right, uh, is there any other business?
Yes, you, just, just the, uh, staff, staff reports.
Move, we accept.
Okay. Mister Lewis.
Hi.
Mister McDaniel.
Yes.
Mister Lyons.
Yes.
Mister Day, and I vote yes, um, and. There's no other thing, uh, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
Okay, Mister Lyon.
Yes.
Mister McDaniel.
Yes.
Mister Day. And I vote yes, good evening and good.
Thank you.
Make the motion.
Thank you.